This is the regularly scheduled city of the South Haven City Council. It is Monday, October the 3rd, 2022. Good evening. We'll call this meeting in order. invocation this evening Reverend Aaron Cobb. Good evening from the Spiritual Church of Christ. We'll get us started.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we come today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support. As this council begins this meeting, help them engage in meaningful discussion and help them grow closer as a group and nurture the bond of this city and this community. Unite this council as they work diligently to unite this citizens of this city and work to be, help all to have a better life. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for coming. Next, if you're able, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands or a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reeser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Motion's approved. All right, next, we have an update from our Van Buren County Commissioner, Ms. Gail Patterson-Gladney. And good evening, Gail.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. The DCS Technology Broadband Mapping Report is complete. If there are areas where people have a dispute with the report, it's a working document, so please let us know if there's any difference with the map and reality. And the maps can be found on the county website. And I think you have the information for that link. Okay, so your city manager will put that out. The next steps in the broadband expansion effort, they're being reviewed, and we'll start with seeking out additional funding through state and federal grants. And decisions are being made now about the project management. For the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget, the board approved the final budget for all funds, capital improvement plan, and budget policies for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. Also, a letter of support has been sent on behalf of the Department of Natural Resources to acquire land in Waverly Township for a state game area. Domestic Violence Coalition, every year, there's an agreement with DVC between the county and DVC, and that agreement has been signed for the next, well, the 2022-23 fiscal year. The Board of Commissioners is scheduling interviews for the county administrator position for October 17th of this year. And then there is a new Veterans Services Office location. The grand opening took place last week, and the services building is located at 226 East Michigan Avenue in Paw Paw. There's financial and technical assistance available for businesses impacted by the Palisades Power Plant closure. And $100,000 is available, that's the amount for the total funds that are available. And they say, is your small business impacted by the Palisades Power Plant closure? And then there is an information telephone number, Mary Hannaford, 734-474-5001. And she is with University of Michigan, and I will give your city manager that information. I've been before you many times with QPR. If you remember, that is a way that you can save lives. It's similar to CPR, but the Q is for question, the P is for persuade, and the R is for refer. There's training for QPR, and I will give this information also to your city manager. The next training will be November 8th. And sometimes teachers or anyone else in the community who wants to know about how to help someone who may be suicidal, how to ask questions, sometimes people are afraid to ask the question, are you considering harming yourself? Because they think that that will make the person harm themselves. But this training will dismiss different thoughts like that and let you know the facts about suicide and how to help prevent it. So I have this for everybody. Also, there is a flyer, how can stress and trauma affect your health? And that's good for all of us in the community. There's a flyer for that. And then the Van Buren County Mental Health put out an agency information brochure. I'm on the board, so that's why I push, I'm on the Van Buren County Mental Health Board, so that's why I'm trying to make sure everyone has the information they need to help with their mental health. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Is the QPR training free?
Yes, that is free. Now, if you go online, there may be a site where you have to pay. But if you go through this information, you wouldn't have to pay.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say, we've been getting the written updates, which is kind of nice, the kind of summaries from your meetings, those have been nice, so I appreciate that, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Thanks for coming. All right, next, we're going to get a presentation from our Van Buren County Central Dispatch Director, Mr. Tim McGee. And good evening, Tim.
Good evening. Thank you for the invitation. Thank you to City Manager Hosier and Chief Thompson for inviting us to give you a little update on what's going on with 911 here in Van Buren County. We have a little statement, if you go back just one for a second for me, Katie. We strive for excellence, not perfection. And I tell staff members and potential hires that we hire from the human race, not the perfect race. And we try to keep that in mind. We work in a high-stress, high-expectation job, and yet no one is perfect. And so, we want to communicate to our community what's going on in 911. There's a lot of misconceptions, and this is kind of like old home week for me. I lived here for almost 20 years prior to getting remarried, moving on down to the Benton Harbor area. And I've been serving at the county in 911 for about 17 years now, just completing our six years as the director. Really quick, you can read, I think it's in your packet, the mission statement. In a nutshell, we're here to serve citizens of the county and particularly public safety responders and getting help to the appropriate places at the appropriate time. And people ask, well, how do you do that? How do you determine that? And so, we have some objectives that, in essence, we take the phone call, we determine what the need is, send the appropriate resources, and then often peripheral resources to support the public safety responders as they go to emergency calls. A little bit of history of 911 in Van Buren County. Prior to 2008, the Michigan State Police had a dispatch center at Paw Paw at the state police post, which is located at I-94 and M-51. City South Haven also had a 911 center located out at the police department. The state police handled all wireless calls. How many of you remember one of these kind of phones? I dug it out of our museum, actually, by my bottom desk drawer, an old flip phone. And remember when wireless came in, and boy, cell phones were the big deal. Some of us are old enough to remember the old bag phones that we plug into the cigarette lighter in our car. And so, the state police handled all wireless calls, 911 calls, until 2008, and they closed that. And the county dispatch absorbed all 911 calls except for landlines, your home phone that's hardwired into your house here in the city limits of South Haven. In 2011, the South Haven 911 Center was closed and consolidated then at the county. So, all 911 calls within Van Buren County are handled at Central Dispatch. 911 in the state of Michigan falls under Public Act 32. It is our affectionate, we call the 911 Act, it's what gives authority to county boards of commissioners to establish how is 911 going to be delivered within their service area. Each county has to come up with a service plan, and we have done that. We just actually, in 2021, revised that, had some language in it that was 10 or 11 years old, and that was accomplished through the end of 2021. We'd hoped to have that done in 2020, but some little thing called COVID happened, and so that put off a number of things that are taking place. How is Van Buren County 911 funded? Good question. Where does the money come from to do that? We're funded with no general fund tax dollars. We're funded with surcharge monies only. The state, if you look on your phone bill, if you have a billing address in Van Buren County, you'll see a 25 cent a month per device. That's a state 911 surcharge, and that is equalized, there's equalized payment given across all of the 911 centers in, or excuse me, all the counties across the state. And then we have a local 911 surcharge that, by Public Act 32, anything over 42 cents has to be voter-approved, up to $3. There's a cap by Public Act 32 of $3. Now, we're very grateful. We've always had great support in Van Buren County for 911. So currently, we pay $3 a month per device to reach 911 here in Van Buren County. Raises a little bit over $2 million. That's what our budget is. Again, no general fund tax dollars go into that. And so, just to give you a little idea of what it costs, we just upgraded a radio system for fire EMS. The dispatch consoles, the licensing for that is $100,000 per seat. So, $500,000 of that project, which is about $2.5 million, half a million of that was just for licensing those dispatch consoles. It costs about $30,000 per seat for a phone, for the 911 phone system to come in. That includes text to 911 and a 911 phone system. On average, we add into our budget, should say add into our budget, we budget about $125,000 a year per seat just for maintenance contracts. It's not cheap. You can't go in and just prop up a center that has to happen. How do we staff? Well, there's 15 of us on staff. There's 12 dispatchers, there's two supervisors, myself, that take care of business, and we're like everybody else in public safety, it's difficult to find help. It's hard to find qualified people. It's hard to find people who work nights and weekends and holidays and miss the kids' birthdays, and all of those things that your police officers, your firefighters, your paramedics, and those 911 dispatchers, those first first responders that you talk to on the phone, will do. And so, we are finding across the board, just as a help for you, nationally, the turnover rate in 911 is 29% annually. Now, we're under that in Van Buren County, and we're very grateful for that. But you think about that, you're turning over a third of your staff every year. It takes us six months to hire somebody to get them through training and get them out on their own to be a 911 dispatcher. So you begin to put that, those dollars, to work in your own mind of what does it cost? And we're not alone. We're not alone. Some of our neighbors are also facing extreme shortages. We're fortunate right now, and that, we don't say that we're fully staffed, we say we're not currently hiring. As soon as we say you're full staff, someone moves on to something else. Who do we dispatch for? Every public safety agency in a county. That includes 12 law enforcement agencies, 14 fire departments, nine medical first response agencies, five transport ambulance services, and then a whole host of support services that we would dispatch for. How busy are we? Well, as you can see, go to the next slide, please, Katie. We average about 130,000 phone calls a year just into Van Buren 911. The bulk of that busy time is about 10:00 AM to midnight. On average, if you take all of what we received during that time, and we break this down in six-hour periods, actually, in our stat poll, about just under three minutes, we answer a phone in Van Buren 911. Now, that includes non-emergency phones. We get a lot of calls on our 657-3101 lines, not just 911 calls. And then in the evening, of course, it begins to slow down. We wish that they would all come in at 2.75 minutes apiece, but as we all know, we can't predict snow bands in the winter, can we? And so, we have that lovely piece of freeway called I-94 that goes through this county. And we've been pretty fortunate on this side of the county, on I-196, not to have big pileups, but we get them frequently there. And just a lot of traffic that deals with some of that, let alone the rest of what takes place. I've given you just a couple of short graphs. We can go to the next one. You can kind of see a breakdown. Abandoned 911 calls are those calls that don't actually connect, where you dial your phone, and there's anywhere between a two- to five-second delay from the time you actually hit the send to the time that it goes through all of the switching process that we might actually pick up. And you're wondering, why aren't they picking up? Why aren't they picking up? It depends on the carrier, especially on a wireless. Today, across the nation, anywhere between 15% and 18% are all that's left on landlines. 80% to 85% of all 911 calls come on a wireless device. You can see in and out administrative calls, so the outbounder where we're calling out from our center to other items. Go to the next, if we could, please. This is just to give you a little idea, this is kind of fascinating, in 2021, you'll see a huge spike on Wednesdays. Say, why Wednesday? Nationally, 911 is busiest Tuesday through Friday between the hours of 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Now, most of us would think Friday night, Saturday night, everybody's off for the weekend. What we've discovered is kids are getting out of school, people are getting off of work, they're coming home, they're discovering this, they're doing this, and so those 911 calls go up. This was an unusual spike in 2021 on Wednesdays. Usually, it's pretty steady, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday particularly, and you can see those afternoon, that 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM is a very busy time for us. And we staff that accordingly as we can. And then we talk about calls for service. Calls for service are when you call and you need a police officer to come to your house, or you need an ambulance to come to your house. You can then see, on average, three-year average, 66,000-plus per year, and I've broken that down for you to take a look at where we're at. What we're finding is law enforcement calls are coming down just a hair. Our challenge is, we don't have as many officers as we had three years ago, to cover those calls. For instance, at night, we might have one sheriff or two sheriff's deputies on, and we might have one state trooper on for two counties. So, the state police post in Paw Paw has a car, that's two troopers, at night, but they're covering both Calum's and Van Buren County for their post-coverage area. So it's not unusual for us to depend on local law enforcement, like South Haven, to go out into Geneva Township, or to go down to help Covert Township with some of their calls, or even into Bangor Township. We've often sent, South Haven is far over to Columbia, almost to Bloomingdale sometimes, if it's a hot call, and there's no one there. You can imagine the only county or state law enforcement person being cleared down by Marcellus or by Sister Lakes and have to go clear to Pine Grove Township at Gobles or Bloomingdale for a call for service. And so, we do rely on our local partners to help us, especially at night. It just gives you an idea of the volume of calls that get handled through Van Buren 911. You can move on to the next, if you would, please, Katie. This, again, gives you a breakdown of where we're at. You can see law enforcement is the most, calls for service. Fire EMS, surprisingly, have really jumped in the last two years. I know that if you talk to Shays, they'll tell you that they are running, 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 just nonstop. There are a lot of times where we're completely out of ambulances in the entire county, and we're constantly putting people on standby. That's a phenomenon that's not just to us. That's happening across the state and across the nation because of not having enough personnel to handle those calls. That's not to alarm you in any way. I can tell you that Shays and Covert particularly handle their calls very well, very well. But it is something that is, they're handling more and more calls each year. Let's move to the next one, if we could, please. This, again, just gives you a little bit of a trend, and then we can move to the next as well. A couple of real distinctions, I think, is important for us. I find that there are a number of folks in the South Haven area, and having lived here almost 20 years, and understanding how things work, it's, there's a lot of folks that think that if they call 911, they're calling over here to the police department. And they're not. They're calling Paw Paw. They say, well, only 911 center and 911 here. The information center that's housed at the police department is not an emergency call 911 is an emergency call center, so really, if you're going to call us, you need to be calling us for a police, fire, or medical emergency. If you're calling for an officer's voicemail for South Haven, you need to call the information center. If you want an officer to call you, they're working, they're on duty, call us direct instead of calling 5151. That way, we can put on our CAD for that officer to, we'll take your name and phone number, have them call you. It saves you frustration, because now you've called 5151, and then you got transferred over to the county. And you go, why am I being transferred? I just, so, it's kind of just an educational thing for you, as you talk to your constituents, that if you have a call for service, you need someone to respond to you, don't call 5151, call 657-3101. Obvious it's an emergency? 911. Call that number, do not hesitate, please. Can I just put a caveat in there? If you're having a medical emergency, don't call a family member first, call 911 first. We'll help you get connected back to your family member. Other business matters that the city of South Haven would determine, the information center would have, we just want to make sure that the folks here understand that 911 is not answered in the city of South Haven. It is answered in Paw Paw at the county dispatch center. And you're more than happy to contact me if you have a question. Anytime, you can give me a holler over there. Two items that are not on the handout that I've been asked to address. Number one is the 988 issue that has come to the forefront, and we're aware of that. There was a soft launch. 988 is a national suicide prevention hotline. And in July of this year, there was what we call a soft launch across the nation, and particularly Michigan. The state 911 office has a working group with, called, with MyCal, and they're working together how to integrate 988 and 911. 988 is not supplanting any other suicide hotlines. It's not supplanting any of the community mental health programs. It's merely an additional resource for people to call. There is a hard launch that is scheduled for mid-2023, so you haven't seen a lot of marketing for 988 yet. We haven't worked out all those details on a state level, on how we can integrate, what are the expectations going to be, particularly for 911? And are we trained, are we adequately able to handle those kind of mental health crises, rather than, currently, if you're having a mental health crisis, we're sending an ambulance or a police officer to your home, or to that location? And so, there's a lot of discussion taking place in that. So, the bottom line is, is that there's more to come. Pay attention to marketing and information that will come out on 988. Again, feel free to contact me, I'd be happy to give you what I can as to where we're at that is working on a national basis. The other one I just want to mention to you is what's called What Three Words. If you don't have that app on your phone, I would encourage you to put it on your phone. What Three Words has gone and mapped the entire globe in 10-foot-by-10-foot squares and assigned three unique words to every 10-foot square. You can imagine what kind of, I think that's actually better than Google. So what happens is, let's say that you're kayaking up the river up here, and you have no idea where you're at, and I have no idea where you're at. And we're trying to find out, you can't get a, you can't get a good cell signal as far as, all we're getting is a tower site. If all we get is a tower site, we have a five-mile radius to try to find that person. If we can get the device off, or the location off your device, we have about a 50-meter, 150-foot. What Three Words will put you in a 10-foot-by-10-foot square. And it's, we've got an interface with that and another program we use called Rapid SOS, and we've used it a couple times where you can reverse back to that phone number if you're calling again on the river, you're kayaking, or whatever, and we can get help exactly where you need to be.
Wow. Kate, put that on the website.
Called What Three Words.
GPS?
Yeah.
It's just, it's really cool.
That's cool.
So, it's an app you put on your phone, it's a free app, and we've been trying to get that word out as well, that we would really encourage people, especially if you're an outdoors kind of person. We've seen it work on Lake Michigan, which is really kind of cool. We tell the Coast Guard, here's your Latin long based on those, on that 10-foot-by-10-foot square, and they're there.
Cool. We'll put that on our website. That's cool.
Yeah, absolutely. I know I kind of flew through a lot of stuff, and I'm kind of passionate about 911 and what we do, what we don't do, and be happy to entertain any questions if you have any tonight. If not, give me a call.
It's nice to have you back, by the way. Good to see you.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that.
So, I'll just, I mean, what, I'm amazed, the work that's done there, I just, nothing but praise. I'm not surprised your turnover's so high. I can't imagine the stress level they go through. I know, the few times I've ever had to call, you become a blabbling, you know, you kind of lose a lot of your sense, and the folks on the other end of the phone are there to just guide you through, so.
To help you find some focus in the crisis.
Thank goodness for that. So, yeah, just remarkable.
Welcome to, we encourage, we're out of the woodwork as far as Covert, we welcome any kind of visit, if you want to come and observe what goes on. Please get ahold of me, we'll make that arrangement. We've got some great staff that'd like to show you what's going on.
I had a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't see it on there, I might have missed it, but I was just wondering with your 911 calls, what percentage are actual emergencies versus something that could be handled elsewhere?
That's a kind of a loaded question, because what's an emergency to you may not be an emergency to me. And so, we really do get emergency 911 calls because somebody didn't get their burger done right.
Oh, wow.
And we get those emergency calls. Just let me get a real quick story, if I might. The shooting at the pier last summer. I have two brand-new dispatchers working. One was on the bait, on the beach with her children and some other children at the time. Her best friend as a dispatcher was, took the first call. We took 98 phone calls in four minutes at Van Buren. We rolled over 53 others to Cass County. I'm a little proud of my staff, they did an incredible job, all of those responders that did. But that's a personal thing, when you're talking to your best friend and they're telling you, we're being shot at, at South Haven Beach. And I get a little emotional about that, because those are my people. This is my beach. So, I couldn't tell you a percentage based on true emergency. Again, if it's an emergency to you, that's an emergency.
Okay. I was also wondering, because I know you said you have 12 dispatchers, it goes 24 hours a day, seven days a week, how, do you have just a couple on each shift?
So currently, I have, I have a third of my staff in what we call probationary training. We have two on at all times, we have a third person right now that comes in at noon. When we are, everybody's up and running, we have a third person comes in at 10:00 AM, supervisor at noon, and a fourth person at 2:00 in the afternoon. So, at our peak, we have at least three, usually four, once we get everybody trained and on their own.
Gotcha. Okay.
Well, here's hoping you won't be hiring for a while.
Leave it at that. So, thank you, no, appreciate it. Have a good night, and I'll get home, get to family. So, thank you for coming. Thank you again. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to the consent agenda, items A through D.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through D.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yep.
Reeser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Takes us to old business. City Council, we ask to consider the following actions regarding the proposed amendment to the Everett Park Phase II PUD. First, we need to hold a public hearing, so I'll take a motion for that.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to open public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it's open. Griffin, you rushed right up. Are you gonna open this up?
I am happy to, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you this evening is a application for a planned unit development amendment that we discussed briefly two weeks ago. This specific application is in regard to the Trailside or the Everett Park PUD project on Elkenburg. This specific application is associated with a request to construct 12 two-family dwelling structures, so 12 duplexes, which would equal 24 total dwelling units. At the last meeting, there was a question raised to staff about the approximate At the last meeting, there was a question raised to staff about the approximate size of those proposed units. We were able to clarify with the developer that the proposed units are going to be between approximately 1,400 and 1,800 square feet a unit. And what is brought before you all this evening is the planning commission's recommendation that the city council approve this PUD application with the proposed conditions listed in your staffer, or in the staff report. There are 12 of those conditions. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, my suggestion would be, take a look at the graphic on page 27 of your packet. The red circle, that is the area of this PUD we're discussing this evening.
Okay, sounds good. Well, this is the public comment part, so why don't we start with public comment? And after that, we'll roll. And if you want to talk, come on up, just state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes. And thanks for moving the stop clock. Nice to be able to see it.
Notice that.
Thank you.
Okay, first of all, this project's been going on for, oh, Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway, sorry. This project's been going on for a year, at least a year. And it was submitted three times, planning commission, the planning commission finally rejected it, and the city council did the same thing, because it was very incomplete, incorrect. Now they have resubmitted their application, went through the planning commission, and they approved it. But what's crazy about this thing is, the first one, I think we had 10 considerations that should be done before it gets approved. Now we have a dozen, and that doesn't include any other items that, that other people have brought up, okay? And I'm gonna talk to this about the planning commission on Thursday, but they need to obey what's in the ordinances, okay? They need to be strict, because these builders, developers, know they can get away with a lot of things. Even if it's not a waiver, they can know that, how could, they can bend the law any way they want. We did finally get some heights on the duplexes. They're 26 to 28 feet, which is good, because the highest building in Trailside 1 is 25 feet 6 inches. We didn't get anything else in the elevations, or in other elevations, showing the back elevations, but at least we got size of the units. But they were required to have residential planning that, that shows all the setbacks on these lots, okay? They defined their setbacks as 10 feet and 12 feet. You can see in the photos I gave you, the first photo is a picture between my house, my neighbor, to the south. I have the smallest setback in the whole area, part in Trailside 1, and that's 20-some feet, okay? Like I said before, five feet for lot line to the edge of the house on each side, and 10-foot common element. The application did not include common element. It did not include a master plan. It did not include a do-care plan. And all these things are missing, okay? They must, they should be in there. And the biggest problem is drainage. If you look at that one drawing that shows the drainage, Phase 2 basically drains from the southeast to the northwest, okay? But if you look over there, just across the trail from me, about 15 feet in, there is a swell that starts up almost a grade at the south end, and goes to about 2 feet at the north end, where it dumps into this pit, which has a drain, drain that goes into cable, which goes into our retention pond, which then goes into the street in St. Joe, okay? This is not shown. We have a big drainage problem in there. Because, first of all, the grading was never shown on any of the drawings, how each house is gonna drain. And second of all, there's no draining for the entire development. In fact, the problem was, on Abel, when they put our houses on Abel, Abel drains to St. Joe, excuse me, drains from St. Joe, all the way, goes from Everett Park to St. Joe. It drains down that way. It was so bad between 111 and 115, that at the last minute, they realized that, hey, 119's gonna dump into 115's garage and house. They had to re-excavate everything and put in a new storm sewer, okay? So, they haven't really gone and really done a good job on this thing. I don't care, you know, what they say, and I think the city gets them away, let them get away with too many items. But I like to say that I think we should really table this item. It probably won't get tabled tonight, because it gets pushed through sometimes, but there's a lot of missing items. I don't know how those missing items get taken care of. I haven't seen that kind of push from the city as far as making everything done. And how do we know that everything's gonna be done? The biggest problem is environmental problem there, okay? They have to handle all that contaminated soil. We talked about this before. The pile that was taken from lots 19 and 20 was dumped over in Indiana, and left there for six to eight months, and eventually got covered. Then the coverage kept coming off, and the neighbors had to complain about it and say, hey, this thing isn't covered. So we got after them again on last 19 and 20, thank you. And same thing happened. They weren't covered, they were sitting there for two weeks. Heavy rains came, they finally covered it, put up the fence. But again, it's been blown over the last, you know, big winds we had lately. And the top part of that thing is gone. So what did they do? They put some pallets up there to kind of mitigate it, okay? We've had to watch this developer since day one. We're gonna have to do the same thing on these duplexes. So, I wish the council would consider some of these items, and I really concerned about these setbacks. As you can see, if you look at the second picture, that is a picture of 300 and 306 Erie, okay? You can see that's seven feet apart, I checked it out. You can see at the top how close those roofs are, okay? With 10 feet on these duplexes, you're gonna have almost the same thing here, with just a few distances between them. And that's just stacking them up. The reason they're doing that is because they want to make money, okay? They want to add extra duplex to each lineup. And the problem is, if you want, want to know why some of those, sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey, Griffin, can you just comment, those 12 items, just, they're stipulations. You just want to explain how staff, or Kate, what you guys, just, what that means.
I can. I can tell you, from my experience with the city, and maybe Councilman Sleeper can speak to it on his experience on planning commission, it's not uncommon for the planning commission with various applications, anything from special land use applications to PUD applications, to have a number of different conditions attached to the recommended approval. Normally, there are a handful of standard conditions that are associated with any application. Things like permits aren't gonna be issued until all fees have been paid. Any other applicable state, local, or federal laws need to be complied with, and other kind of more, or general conditions. And then on items like PUDs, that can be a little bit more variable. The conditions are a lot of times where the planning commission or city staff will memorialize certain items with the developer. It's a great way to get formal documentation of some of these things put into the minutes. I can tell you, and the city attorney may be able to help as well, these conditions, a lot of times, when there are concerns or questions at some point in the future, are where city staff can look back to, to confirm what items have been discussed or agreed on with the developer when it comes to conditions of approval.
Right. And I just want to be clear that, I mean, while we are encouraged by development, we also want to make sure the developers are following the rules. So, I mean, I want, you know, just so we're clear here, because I know there was concern last time with the infamous pile of dirt, which I think we all sort of, you know, again, we've had those discussions with the developer. I just want to, again, make sure that, or sharing that, yes, we've talked to the developer, they're aware of our expectations. We'll continue to hold our feet to the fire.
Absolutely. And I think for this project in particular, when it comes to Trailside, even as Mr. Agnello mentioned, this is not the first time this project has come before the planning commission or even the city council. There have been multiple phases considered by city council. Our understanding is there are multiple phases yet to come. So this is, this is a long-term investment, and a long-term project in the city that, that we're all working through.
Yeah, yeah. And we're cleaning up a piece of property that was city-making for a long time, so. Okay, anybody else have questions?
I have comments.
Good evening.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. As regard to conditions, yes, those are normal. But what is not normal is a package that does not comply with the strict requirements that need to be addressed in an application, which are missing in this case. As delineated in my email briefly, which I incorporate by reference, and will highlight again now. So, Section 140416, gosh, that one keeps getting missed. It has not been repealed yet, and it should be there. If it doesn't apply, you say it doesn't apply, but you don't ignore it. Every criteria that cannot be met seems to get ignored. Holding people's feet to the fire, mayor, I'm sorry. With regard to Trailside, when the issues were first brought up with the dirt and the lacking fence, city said, oh, we talked to the developer, everything was fine. I called Eagle. Eagle said, oh, I talked to the developers, everything's fine. I explained to them what I explained to the city, and she said, oh, I have to call them back. The next day, fences arrive. I then had to make multiple calls about the dirt that was uncovered, blowing dirt into people's properties. Holding feet to the fire, when? Maple gate, when? Let's put some actions behind the words. With regard to lacking here, lot coverage, that is a criteria in RM1, and that is missing in this table. What is the lot coverage? And you can't even compute the lot coverage, because you don't have the square footage of the buildings, which we've been requesting. Square footage of the footprint is not square footage of livable space. Holding feet to the fire, when are all the criteria going to be addressed and not summarily dismissed by the waiver of the city council that does not protect the health, safety, and welfare of this community? Drainage, again, I repeat, maple gate. The issues that Dan raised with regard to Trailside. The plots that are, the diagrams that are presented have lines, but it doesn't show how things are draining. And there's a reference to a drainage along Everett Park, I believe, but that's in a different phase, and this is phase development. It's all supposed to be contained within the phase it's being developed, and it's not clear. And in fact, the staff report says it appears okay. Since when do we plan developments that appear okay? These, Councilman Sleeper, you're a chemical engineer. I hope you have issues with this apparent compliance. These are calculatable numbers. This is, this can be determined. Appear is unacceptable, and it needs to be sent back. It's unfortunate that the planning commission pushed it through to check a box. It's incumbent upon the city council not to do the same. And in fact, the city engineers' report references a Phase 2A. There is no Phase 2A. So what was the city engineer looking at? I raised this on Friday, or Thursday. I raised it last week. There was time for staff to look at it. I know staff is overburdened, but that's because things that are not complete are getting put through, and we're having to do an end run at the end to try and cross the Ts and dot the Is, but it's just becoming a blur. So again, please, evaluate this according to the strict law. The ordinance requires certain things with a PUD. They're lacking in this application. It should not be before you at this point. And it's incumbent upon you to do the right thing, to hold their feet to the fire, make sure they're done right, and not dismiss requirements on, under the disguise of a condition that is a disservice to us, and we deserve more. And last but not least, the do-care plan. If by some unfortunate chance you do push this through to check another box, I hope that a condition is added, that any do-care plan for this phase is added to the website. I know there's a do-care plan there. Do not know how much it covers, do not know how much it might be modified. I know they're undergoing investigation of the property, but everything needs to be updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Uh, got none. A motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion, second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, all right, it's closed. Next, we gotta actually discuss doing this. All right. Sorry. Uh, city council asks to consider the approval of the proposed amendment to the Harbor Club, oh, wait a minute here, sorry. Everett Park. Everett Park, sorry. Phase 2 PUD, with the conditions recommended by the planning commission on September the 1st, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Everett Park Phase 2 PUD with the conditions recommended by the planning commission on their September 1st, 2022 meeting.
Second. We got a motion, we got a second. All right, discussion. I guess, Griffin, you want to add any comments based on just, I mean?
I don't have any comments to add at this time. I'm happy to do the best I can to answer any questions.
Okay. Council, questions? Or is it clear?
I guess you kind of brought up asking George, since he's on the planning commission, to kind of give his perspective on it, especially regarding the conditions, and if you feel like it's adequate.
Well, I do feel it's adequate. I voted for it when it came through planning commission. I think the conditions that were there, although maybe there's a few more conditions than what we normally see, I think they were adequate, and I think they cover the issues the planning commissioners were concerned about, to make sure those get addressed before the project gets completed. So, I don't have any concerns about it. And I spent a lot of time in planning commission and getting ready for this meeting, looking at the documents, so I don't share the same concerns that have been brought up.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I've reviewed it, I understand it. I, part of the reason I was asking Griffin, just on, Kate, just so there's an understanding, like kind of how we do ensure those 12 items are met, I, we're, you know, we're checking them all, we're making sure, you know, you're meeting with the developers pretty regularly, or on the phone with them to make sure that, you know, we need this soil erosion, we need these documents, you know, just, just. Any comments on just that process? I mean, just the, just your sheer amount of communication with these developers?
We have a lot of communication. We've been in communication with Eagle. They are the deciding, well, they are the authority for environmental issues. So, if there is an issue, we definitely pass that on. We are in routine communication with them. So, there's things that we can do, and we are in communication with those developers. When there is an issue that's brought up, we communicate immediately.
And I think something I'll add is, I know in this last round, again, something that was mentioned specifically at planning commission with Mr. O'Connor, the developer, is he and his development team are aware of the level of scrutiny being put on his project by members of the public, by neighbors, by city council members, by city staff. They are, they are aware of the expectations, and they are also aware that there are several future phases, both in terms of PUD amendments and developments, as well as brownfields and other actions potentially being brought before the city, where there are opportunities to be held accountable if so needed. So, I think we are all on the same page on terms of the expectations, and are all working together to try to move forward a high-quality development in the city.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, and again, we're encouraged by the development and the investment. This is a lot of investment into this project, so that's very encouraging. If there are no other questions?
Can I ask one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Regarding lot coverage, is that something that will be determined later? Will it definitely be within our ordinance parameters?
So, my understanding is that lot cover applies to a single lot, and in a PUD, it's not really what we have. I don't believe that requirement is applicable to a PUD. It's covered instead by open space calculations, and 15% open space is required for each phase of the development, individually and for the phase overall as a whole. And that 15% open space was calculated and is met in this, in this particular phase that's being proposed.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Everybody else good? All right, we got a motion, we got a second to approve the proposed amendment to Everett Park Phase 2 PUD. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, we're approved. Next, city council, we ask to consider the following actions regarding the proposed amendment to the Harbor Club condominium PUD. First, we need to hold the public hearings.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second, to open the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it is open? Oh, winner.
Yes, thank you. Being brought before you this evening is another PUD amendment for another large housing development in the city of South Haven. This item is specifically related to the Harbor Club condominium PUD over by Baseline Road. I do believe the developer, Mr. Scott Sinar, is present this evening, if there are any questions for him. But the real short summary of this application is, it is associated with a previously approved plan to construct a community swimming pool, spa, and adjoining poolhouse facility at the time of the original approval. At the time of the original approv, approval, the design of the poolhouse was not finalized. When the finalized plans were ultimately submitted to the building department and building permits were sought, there were changes that, while minor, did not meet the zoning ordinance criteria for administrative approval. Therefore, the site plan needed to be modified and brought back via a PUD amendment to the Planning Commission, and now to you all. With that being said, similarly to the last report, included in the staff report is the, the motion that was passed recommending approval of this PUD amendment to the city council, as well as the seven conditions that were included. I will specifically note that in addition to the, the seven conditions, it was specifically clarified for item number seven, that the screening fence be completed by the end of 2022 and prior to the poolhouse being completed. This was in relation to some concerns from neighbors associated with the lack of clarity on that condition when this PUD amendment was approved several months ago. So with that being said, I, happy to do whatever I can to answer any questions.
Sounds good. You guys want to hear from the public first? Let's do that. We're at the public hearing portion, so if anybody from the public would like to come on up, ask questions or comments, come on up. Go ahead, on, just going twice. So.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? We're closed. All right, next, City Council, we ask to consider the approval of the proposed amendments to the Harbor Club condominium PUD with the conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission on September the 1st, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendments to the Harbor Club condominium PUD. Will, is that with? The conditions recommended by the Planning Commission on September 1st, 2022.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second. Now, any questions of the council? Big thing is the fence done by the end of the year.
That's correct. I think that that's something that's being asked.
Yep.
From the neighborhood, so this was something that was conditioned by the Planning Commission. It's recommended this body adopt that condition as well.
Perfect. Screening fence taken care of. Okay. We got a motion, we got a second. If there are no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's approved. Very good. Thank you very much for coming. That takes us to, City Council, we ask to consider the following actions regarding the industrial facilities tax exemption application from Revere Environmental at 233 Veterans Boulevard. And we need to, again, open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right, so who's got it?
I, I can do this one again.
All right, there we go.
So City Council this evening is being asked to consider an application for an industrial facilities tax exemption from Revere Environmental. I know all of you are very familiar with Revere, a major manufacturer here in the city of South Haven. They are applying for an IFT exemption for real property associated with the 22,500-square-foot expansion project that they had recently approved by the Planning Commission. It is expected that this project will create 10 new jobs within the next two years, as well as retain the 60 existing jobs at that facility. Similarly to what we discussed two weeks ago at the last meeting, what's before you this evening is the draft resolution that would approve the tax abatement and be forwarded on to the State Tax Commission, as well as a clawback agreement similar to those used by the city in South Haven in other situations where council's being asked to consider an abatement.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, this is the public portion, so if anybody's got any questions about this, come on up, state your name and address. Quiet again, once, twice.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's closed. And next, City Council, we ask to consider a motion to approve Resolution 2022-25, which is a resolution approving and an, an application from Revere Environmental for an industrial facilities exemption certificate for real property improvement only.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-25, a resolution approving an application from Revere Environmental for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for real property improvement only.
Second.
Good, motion and second. Okay, this is, again, good news. So building homes, expanding businesses, so.
Yes, and the timing of this is good, assuming City Council moves forward and approves this application. City staff will work to get that submitted to the State Tax Commission later this week, which is prior to the October 31 deadline that the Department of Treasury sets every year to put abatements in effect for, for that tax year. So we are getting a little close to the end of, of that deadline for this year, but we should be able to get it in and set Revere up to be successful moving forward.
Outstanding, yeah. Great company, if you're not familiar with it, right out in our industrial park, really good employer, adding jobs, so that's super encouraging, as our economic development coordinators in the corner over there go in thumbs up, so that's good. Council questions, comments? Thumbs are up, good. We got a motion, we got a second to approve Resolution 2022-25. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's approved. New business. City Council, we ask to consider the approval of the following special event applications. First special event application, 2022-21, no pressure here, the South Haven High School Homecoming Parade 2022 to be held this Friday, October the 7th, 2022, from 5:30 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. Lineups at 5:00 p.m. starting on Kalamazoo Street, north on Phoenix Street, and ending at Radcliffe Field.
I make a motion to approve special event, 2022-21, the South Haven High School Homecoming Parade for 2022, to be held this Friday.
Second.
Motion is second. Phew, got it, all right.
I can speak to this.
Tell us all about it.
Having put this together in the past.
Do it.
They'll meet at 5 o'clock, and once they're all lined up, then some police officers will escort the parade, so it won't be a long road closing. It'll just be however long it takes the marching band to march, and they march rather quickly. So it won't be a long closure, and then they, they end at the field, and, and then, of course, we have the game and all the other events.
So come out, so, well, once we approve it, sorry, once we approve.
Will there be candy thrown?
Oh, they're not supposed to.
I don't think they have that on their, their, on their application. It says marching band, choir, floats, community groups, and walking participants, so.
I think we have a rule about it, too, but.
Bring it down.
One thing, this year, they're doing court, homecoming court members from each grade. We've never done that before, in the 26 years I've been here, anyway, that we've not done that. So there'll be king and queen, but then there'll be a representative from the juniors, sophomores, and the freshmen. So that'll be fun.
Cool.
And we're playing Water of the Elite.
Okay, good, should take care of that.
And, and Leticia and I will talk to Mrs. Vanderus, or the kids call her Vandy, about getting these in a little quicker, not the same week.
Right.
We like, we like these high-pressure ones, it's good. Now, are there any public questions on this? Anybody else want to volunteer to bring candy? Who else out there? Nothing other? Council questions, comments? Nothing? Motion second to approve special event, special event application, 2022-21, South Haven High School Homecoming. Everyone should be down there, 5:30 p.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's approved. Next, special event application, 2022-22, Reverse Trick or Treat 2022, to be held on Saturday, October the 29th, 2022, from 11:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., stationed at the corner of Phoenix Street and Center Street.
I make a motion to approve Special Event Application 2022-22, Reverse Trick or Treat 2022, to be held October 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the corner of Phoenix Street and Center Street.
Second. All right, motion and second on this one? All right, who wants to tell us about reversing Trick or Treat?
So on Saturday, October 29th, the South, St. Basil's Catholic School Booster Club will be out there, they'll be dressed in their costumes, and they will be giving out candy, prepackaged candy and treats to anyone who makes a monetary donation to St. Basil's Catholic Schools. This will be a fundraiser, it'll be fun, and they're encouraging everyone to come up dressed up and see their, their outfits while they give a donation and then get some candy.
Like it. Public questions on this one? Council questions? Nothing? All right, we got a motion and a second to approve Special Event Application 2022-22, Reverse Trick or Treat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It is approved. Very good. Next, City Council, we ask to consider the preliminary report from the community vision statement and provide guidance, so we're not looking for action, just more guidance, on the next steps to city staff and our consultants. So, I know our consultant, I just want to.
That's right.
Talk and bring him up, and we'll kind of.
Sure.
Start talking about it.
We have Greg Goodshow, who has been undertaking our community vision statement, and we've gone through the first phase and now the second phase, and I think Greg wants to give you an update on where we stand, as well as get some guidance from you as to what you're looking for going further. So without further ado, Mr. Greg Goodshow.
Thank you. It was back in April when I was here last to present my first preliminary report. That was after the first phase work, which was interviewing all of you and reviewing your various planning documents. You will recall that that led to some public comments, and then a second phase was, was approved, which was intended to involve members of the community, and that had basically two components to it. We had three in-person listening sessions that were scheduled, and then we also had an online survey, which followed the same format as the in-person listening sessions. We had about 30 people that attended the in-person sessions, and we had about, I think it was 86 responses to the, to the online survey, which was far more than I expected. And I was very pleased with that, and a number of people who responded to the, to the survey, it was all open-ended, and some people wrote paragraph after paragraph about that. And one of the things that I will be doing is to find a way to get the raw data in the hands of your city manager. I think there's a lot of, of value in seeing some of that, some of those comments, and particularly, I know that you're going to be getting into a master planning process here in the next couple of years. I think some of the information that comes from those individual comments that kind of got distilled down into the report that I provided to you, some of those comments, I think, may have some value to you and to city staff in having a broader way of characterizing the kinds of comments that were coming in through that process. So I, I want to indicate that the result of incorporating the public comments that we received, the citizen comments portion of this, led to a very different outcome than was included in the original preliminary report. That was, the, that initial effort was focused primarily on an organizational vision statement. What we did with the second portion of this is to really think of that in terms of primarily a community vision statement. Where do people think that the city of South Haven and South Haven area, where are we going? What do we want the community to look like 10 or 20 years down the road? That then allowed for modifying my original thinking about how to characterize an organizational mission statement to focus more on what is, what is the organization then being called on to do in terms of what I would characterize as vision in action? That is, how, what's the role of the city council and city government here in bringing that community vision statement to reality, particularly in terms of those elements of it that are within the purview of what a city government would do? So I believe you've all received a copy of the report, and I don't know, is it possible to maybe bring up just the first page, page one of that, so that, I don't want to have to read these to you if we can get those presented on the screen to you here. The, the, as this is coming up, let me just indicate that, first of all, in terms of the community, what I attempted to do here as far as the community input in the community vision statement, and of course, your comments as well were incorporated, that is, I interviewed you, a number of your comments were about the community as well. But there are some themes that were very, very clear, in my view, that came to the fore here. There's a concern on the part of members of the community that they've kind of lost that hometown feel, that family-friendly environment, and they'd like to see that returned and have a, you know, a more traditional view of the community that is more like that traditional small town. There was concern about the fact that there has been a loss of economic resilience and economic diversity, that we've become too focused on tourism as the main economic driver in the community, and a feeling that that's not necessarily desirable for the long run as they reflected on the various waves of, of economic focus that have gone on in the past here, and the concern about, you know, would tourism last forever? Should we not put all of our, you know, maybe we don't want to put all of our eggs in one basket. Obviously, a very significant interest in preserving the natural attributes of the area, the lake shore and the river and other things around here, and to augment that by continuing to make quality of life investments here for the benefit of both residents and visitors alike. And then, interestingly, and I think distinctive for a community, a small community, is that interest in recognizing the historic diversity, ethnic diversity, racial and ethnic diversity that has characterized this community, and the fact that they feel that is a distinctive feature of South Haven, and there's a worry that that's being lost, and that there should be some efforts made to ensure that it is not lost, and that we have that kind of diversity continue. They felt that that was, that was important for the community. If we can maybe scroll down just a little bit to get, I want to move then on to the, we able to, yeah, okay, we're going to do this in two, two parts here. We can't get both of them to display at one time here. So the, the question that if we go, let's go back, Kate, to the, all right. We didn't rehearse this part, as you can see.
Mm-hmm.
So then, the question is, what does, you know, so I think we can characterize in terms of the community vision statement, you know, those themes come up very clear, come through fairly clearly there. The question then is, what is the vision for the organization in bringing that about? And so the proposed vision statement for the organization references the key leadership role that the city government is going to play in bringing about the vision of the community vision, and then identifies what, what are kind of the key, the key actions, if you will, this vision and action that I referred to, that, that, the key elements of that that are going to be important to bring that about? So partnering with others is, is clearly something that, that we had talked about and it came through clearly in the interviews that I did with you, the investments that you'll be making in, in financial, technical, human resources programs and projects to, to bring things about. And then, I think those are, those are fairly obvious and straightforward, and if we can then move, all right, now we're, now we're getting there. So then, another element here, and this came out again from your comments in interviews about that commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I only attended just the last few moments of your conversation here at your, at your earlier special meeting, but clearly, this is something that is, is front of mind for, top of mind for you folks, and that's incorporated here, although not necessarily in, in looking at the larger community, and that's something that, that you may wish to think about. This mainly focuses on the fact that you would make a commitment internally and demonstrate for the rest of the community that commitment. You may wish to think about whether or not you want to have a greater leadership role in fostering diversity, equity, and inclusion in the larger community, and I think that was the comment that you were making, I think, as I walked in on the meeting this evening. And so that's something I think you would want to consider, is whether there is a greater leadership role in that area beyond just what you're doing here internally in fostering those kinds of values and that culture in the larger community. I did not capture that here because that was not, you know, I'm, I'm being driven by what I'm hearing, coming, coming from the comments that I received from you and from others, and that was not an element of it that, that I was able to discern there, but that doesn't mean that that's not a value that you would want to incorporate going forward. The final bullet point here is the one that I particularly want to focus on, because it is very distinctly different from anything that was included in my original preliminary report back in, in April. And it grows out of a significant impression that I have from the comments that I was hearing, that the citizens are concerned about the relationship between local government and the citizenry, and whether or not there has been some bonds of trust that have been broken, whether the citizens have confidence in what you're doing here. And I believe that, and. doing here. And I believe that, and I really thought long and hard about, how is it that I can present this to you? And I want to be very frank about, about the implications of this for you, and that's why I'm highlighting it here for you. I think a lot of the concern that gives rise to the comments that I heard about this grows out of the manner in which the short-term rental issue has been handled in the community. And I'm not making a, I can't make a, any kind of a conclusion about whether it was handled well or handled poorly. I know a little bit about it, but not enough, I don't have enough history to be able to make a determination about whether you've done the right thing or not. What I can tell you is that that issue from a public perception standpoint is that either incorrect actions were taken, or you didn't follow the rules that you already had in place, and so things were allowed to go forward that perhaps shouldn't have. And that's really, I think, grossly simplifying that issue for you, but that's what gives rise to this particular statement here. And if there's any, any portion of this that I would say is, this portion of your organizational vision statement, that I would say you would particularly want to spend time and think about, and make sure that it reflects you and not me, it would be that particular statement here. Before I conclude my, any brief comments here, and, and have some, some conversation with you about this, I do want to indicate that a part of the process that was involved here, not only was to gather the input from you and from other citizens, but also then to make sure that there was an opportunity for those same citizens to see what that preliminary report looked like. And so one of the things that, when this was prepared, and when I knew that it was on the website, I sent out an email. I had put together an email list of all the people that participated either in the in-person sessions or who had submitted responses to the online survey. And so I alerted them that it was out there, please review it, and please get in touch with me with any comments that you might have. And I also, there was a second email address for comments that would come directly to you. I've not heard whether anybody took advantage of that, apart from those who had commented for me. Of the 110 or 15 or emails then that I sent, I received responses back from three people, and I just want to, just very, very quickly highlight the, in very, very general terms, what those three comments were, just so you have that information. And it's my plan that I would be incorporating those into the final report as kind of the feedback on that report. So you'll have that, not necessarily at length, but certainly in greater detail than I'm going to offer you right now. So the first comment really had to do with the role of tourism in the community. What I was characterizing, and what I've referred to here, is that feeling that, you know, it's too heavily dependent, communities too heavily current, dependent currently on tourism, and that there should be a need to rebalance that. This individual felt that that was just the opposite of what should be going on, that, that, you know, tourism should be recognized as a major economic driver here. And in addition to that, the fact that there are people who, for whom this is a bedroom community, they're, they're living here but work elsewhere, and felt that those were two economic drivers that were not adequately characterized within the report. The second, I get my second comment up here. No, I'm sorry, as I'm fumbling with my paper. There is another one, and I seem to have misplaced it. And I don't, all right, hold on a minute. I don't have it with me, and I can't recall right, right now exactly what that one was. I have it somewhere here. But then the second, the other one that I will call to your attention was, again, a feeling that my report had downplayed, to some extent, the lack of confidence and the breaking of trust, the item that I had just referred to there. That was one portion of the comment, a feeling that that had not been adequately characterized as to the strength of those feelings and to the roots of that within the short-term rental, and more specifically, in the enforcement or application of zoning ordinance rules and regulation. The other portion of the concern was, in a similar way, that I had not adequately characterized, the concerns about lack of employment opportunities and so forth. And I just want to indicate to, to you that, and certainly the folks who read this, read my report, particularly those that participated in the process, may very well come away based on their participation with a different impression as to what they heard. And that's certainly a danger in any kind of effort on my part to characterize what I'm hearing. I may be hearing different things than other people are hearing. I want to be clear, however, that my report was not influenced by any outside input from city staff or from any of you, apart from the comments that I heard here. So I've made a good faith effort here to try and characterize this accurately in terms of my interpretation of what went on here, but it certainly is open to the kinds of interpretation that you might hear as these comments that I received reflected. And I'd say, in, in order that you should have that in, as a part of your final report, I'll make sure to incorporate that. So with that, let me, let me stop and, and answer any questions or take any feedback from you. The next step, I'm sorry, now I finally have found the other one, and this one, I should have been able to remember it. This commenter indicated that I had not characterized as, as strongly as he would have liked, the influence of the surrounding townships on the development of this area. That's mentioned in my comments here, in, in the proposed vision statement for the organization about partnering with other units of government, but I think this person wanted to be clear that there's a regional focus here that, or should be a regional focus, that looks at the role of the townships in the development of the overall area as well. So that's the third one. So now, let me, let me stop and, and ask for your input here. The, the plan is to, at this stage, again, depending on your responses and reaction, is to try and hear about what you think, whether you think that I, based on the, what I've presented here, whether this captures adequately for you what needs to be done here, or do I need to go back to the drawing board, or do I need to make some minor or other kinds of revisions to the, to the report before it is finalized for you?
I'll just, once, I'll just say, thanks for the information to date. I know we're three hours into this, so I know at some point in time, I would say, it'd be nice to have us sit down and kind of digest this as a group. So I mean, just, I don't want to fire out a up or down at this moment, but go ahead. I just, I'm going to start with that and just say it's work to do.
And I'm not surprised, given the, the length of your meeting, to get that kind of an answer from you. You know, I, I knew coming in here, having looked at the agenda, that I wasn't the only thing that you were dealing with here this evening. And so I certainly want to make sure that you are approaching this important topic at a time when you've had the, you know, the time and energy to be able to thoughtfully put into how, how you want to, you know, move forward from here.
Yeah, I read this last night after being out of town all week. So I read it in detail. Kate was nice enough to run me hard copies in my home today, so I could read it again and make notes on it. I was amazed how clear and accurate you were in characterizing the people in this town and some of the things going on in this town. In particular, a sore subject for a lot of people in this town is short-term rentals. And I can see you shaking your head. When you put up there that that's an important statement, it is funny, when I took notes, exact thing I put on my notes is that's an important statement. It implies, not only our people, and we all know this, that short-term rentals is a big issue in this town, but this implies very clearly that people don't feel that the city government is clearly listening to them and acting on their wishes in terms of what they want to have done with short-term rentals. So I'm not going to go into short-term rentals, it's late, but I do believe that there is a real break between our residents and the city government, and I'm part of it. So I'm part of the problem, if I can't help fix it. But I think, in simple terms, we need to listen better and listen to the, what the residents want, because this is outlining the same exact thing that I keep hearing. And I'll take one statement, I've said this before, from the Upjohn study, when it says, don't let, and I'm loosely paraphrasing, but I know a couple of these words are accurate. Don't let this town become a beach town, meaning it's got to be more than just a resort town. It's got to be a 12-month-a-year town. And all of this information points to, we have to address this. But I'm amazed, because I didn't think the vision statement was going to entail all this, because there's so much information here, that the, the vision statement that I thought was going to be a short statement in your original one, we had two choices, is now this whole thing that took me hours to read, hours today to outline. So I guess the mayor's right, we need to talk about it some more. But it just proves again that this issue, this thorny issue of short-term rentals, is something that's on the community's mind, and they don't feel they're being heard. And you're shaking your head. And I hope, if nothing else, in this room, we all get that. Whatever decisions we make, whatever side of this issue we're on, we have to address it, and we have to listen to the needs and wants of this community. That's all.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. I thought, when I was reading it, that a lot of it did echo what we found in the Upjohn study regarding tourism, our aging population, economic diversity, and things like that. So just kind of reaffirmed that we need to be looking at those things and moving in a good direction. I just personally didn't love the first bullet point, that, because I feel like it brings families who live here, and then short-term rentals, and it just puts them on the same level. And I just would, I like to think that residents and people who live here are more, I don't know, more significant, I don't know what the right word is, but not equal with investment properties, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Mine was just even a simpler, well, a simpler comment. You mentioned that when you jumped into it, you were, you were, you kind of had in mind an organizational vision statement, and then, in doing your homework, you, it morphed into more of a community statement. I wonder if we, could we separate those? Could we have two?
Well, they really are.
And this, and that's?
As presented here now, they really are. Now, that one was not originally how it came together. When we originally approached this, this was as an organizational vision statement. You received that, that one still had to blend in some of the, what I would characterize as the, the community vision statement. But when we, when we brought in the second phase of that, then that really opened the door to have two different vision statements. The first of them that was presented, the one kind of on the top half of the page here, that's the community vision statement, and that is driven primarily by the comments that were made in the listening sessions, in the, in the, from the online survey, but also the comments that all of you made about the, the community as well. There's, there's a lot of commonalities in all of that. So that's really the top one here. The organizational vision statement is the second piece of this. So these are really, and I maybe could have done them in two different colors here to make it more clearly stand out, but when we talk about South Haven versus the city of South Haven, so you're talking about the South Haven as a community, that's up on the top part of the page here, and then the city of South Haven, the organization, that, that legal organization, that's the distinction. But I appreciate that comment, because if, if it's not as clear to you as what it should be, then it's going to be not as clear to others as well. And I can certainly make, make, I can do a better job of making that apparent.
Well, I mean, you have the bold, the bold line there, but.
No, I understand. Nope.
Clearly, I knew it was a transition, but, okay.
That's, that's, I can improve on that, certainly.
Anybody else?
I just had one comment, and I think, you know, I might be open to getting some more time to, to kind of talk about this in more detail. But the, in the, the very opening line of the vision statement talks about, and, and your remarks kind of, I, I see where this is coming from, but it talks about a welcoming small town. And I think that the word "small town" has different meanings for different people. And because we are, by definition, not a town, we're a city, I think the "small" comes into play in other words used in that, in that line, like quaint and charming. I would just get rid of "small town" and just put "city," just because, I mean, that's what we are, city.
I, I adopted that term because it was a term used by a number of people in responding to the surveys in particular. That's where, that, that's their language, that's where they, that's what they use. But I, I appreciate that. That's, that's fine. That doesn't have to be there, and I understand your, your concern.
I kind of, and I have some similar thoughts, because I mean, part of this, I know, part of it, it's, we can get into it later, but I think some of this feels more mission-y, some feels more visionary. If we're going to try to consolidate and make it more concise, and sort of make what is our, you know, our ambitions, what's unique and special, you know, just, for those that are looking at this as they look at our community, I mean, we have no mention of the fact that we're a port town, we're just little things that truly distinguish us. But we could sit down and spend a little more time on that. But some good points in here I think we can work from, just got to.
Right. And I think the importance of that, Mayor, is this is, this is my recommendation to you, but that doesn't mean that it's cast in stone, and it shouldn't be viewed that way. I think that you need to adapt this. What I've tried to do is to take the input that I received from all of you and from the community members that participated, and put it into a summary form for you. But this will be yours, and so you want to make sure that it says what you want it to say. So this is, you know, this is a starting point, but it's, you know, it won't hurt my feelings if you change words here and there, or shrink it down, or add to it, that's, you know, that's, it's yours, and you're the ones who have to live with it. Once it's done, you want to make sure that it's right.
Sounds good. No, I appreciate it. So I think at this point in time, I think it would make sense, I mean, if, if council's agreeable, I mean, I'd say, digest, get your comments to Kate, and we'll set a workshop up.
Yeah, that would work, and we can collaborate with Greg and align with something.
Let's do that. But thanks for getting us this far. So we're closer.
All right.
Thanks for hanging out.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, let's go on to our next one, which is our last big topic. So we're going to be asked to consider two proposals for an economic impact report regarding short-term rentals. So Kate, just want to maybe just hear both, and then we can see if there's a motion to approve, or to throw one of them out there?
What's before, Council, is we went and sought two proposals for an economic impact on short-term rentals. As you know, this is one of our adopted goals for this year, is reviewing short-term rentals, and city council has asked staff to look at an economic impact report detailing some of the impacts that have been felt by this community by short-term rentals. We have shook the weeds and come up with two proposals for you, one from WMU, from the Public Administration Center, and the other one is by Roby, Jim Roby and George Aruchak. Jim Roby, you may recognize from the Upjohn Institute's Community Health Report that was done in 2020. Mr. Roby is no longer with the Upjohn Institute, he has formed his own analytic company. So we have these two reports, and I'm.
Is Mr. Roby here today?
No, I do not see Jim Roby here today, but Jim Hettinger, who has helped us along with this process here, he can come on up and kind of give you some, some highlights on both these proposals. If council does have questions, I can have Mr. Udaya, I think I ruined his name, but Wagle, from WMU, if you would like to have questions, I can dial him in. He is not here today, but he is in, I think, Detroit tonight. So, so if council has questions for Mr. Wagle, I can dial him up. Otherwise, we have Jim Hettinger here to kind of talk about these proposals. Jim? And I should say that we understand that city staff does recognize that this is a pretty impactful report that council has been asking for. This is why, this is for you to decide what report would best meet your goals as a council, knowing that this is a very intimate report that you've been asking for. That's why this, that's why this question has been put to you without a recommendation for your, your decision-making.
Sounds good. Thanks. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening. Nothing like continuing with a controversial subject with people who have been sitting and working hard for three or four hours. who have been sitting and working hard for three or four hours. And I'm beginning to refer to short-term, short-term rentals as the issue that aid a, aid a community. And I don't think you should let that happen. First of all, introduction, I got involved with this not because I love the subject. I did very little housing in my career as an economic developer. But in the past five to eight years, it's become pretty important to economic development. And the literature within economic development that's dealing with housing has become omnipresent, almost. And it should be, you know, affordable housing is necessary for the area workforce. As the American attest, as we've made some of our retention calls, we've become aware of people who live outside South Haven but come in here to work. In particular, people from the Holland area. And you have to wonder, some of this is as long ago as three years, but you have to wonder what the increased energy prices, what toll that takes of people who commute here. Secondly, housing selection is important. Appropriate mixes of blue collar, white collar, and other levels give site selectors a high degree of confidence that the community is able to meet varied, varied housing needs. Third, economic development is a wealth-building process, and we Americans have traditionally defined wealth-building as owner, homeownership, as being a key to that. Fourth, purposeful, and, and you're doing some of this with your PUD work, but purposeful housing development involves sound use, sound land use policies. Anytime we get a chance to redevelop vacant or underutilized property with community housing, it's an oppor, it's an opportunity we need to really, really shake. And if, if we're fortunate, housing developments provide renewed tax base and strengthen neighborhoods. We know from the city's housing analyst, who I think is one of the very best in the state, that 150,000 Michigan households will need housing at or under $250,000 before 2025. When you consider that 60% of the Michigan workforce earns less than $20 an hour, there's quite a structural problem. And now that we've had the disaster in Florida, when you talk about the need for skilled labor and building materials and all of that, this is going to be quite an ugly tug-of-war in the next five to 10 years. So that's just the economic development perspective on housing. As the city manager said, we need some outside expertise to look at the community and determine whether or not the commission or the council in its pursuit of balanced housing, balanced economy, can determine what impacts would emanate from actions that they take. We took this to the Public Administration Department of Western Michigan University. And also Jim Roby and George Ericcheck, George Ericcheck and I have been acquainted for well over 30 years, and I can think of at least one occasion where he saved my neck with his, his considerable research capability. The problem really originates back in 2000, 2004, when we kind of transitioned to what they call the collaborative or sharing economy. This gave birth to such ventures as Lyft and Uber. There's an application for power tool sharing. You go out and buy a chainsaw, and you use it maybe once a year. Why not rent it to your neighbor? Strong platforms emerged which enabled this kind of commerce to take place. And they also emerged in such a way as to impact the housing, and particularly housing in a community like South Haven. And I think when you were discussing the vision statement a little bit, and some of the impact, some of the stuff that I've heard is that we've always been well-known for family resorts, quaint cottages, and, and beautiful beaches. And from that perspective, tourism seems like a very sustainable part of the local economy. But when the very powerful platforms for home sharing and home rental came online and began to be used, there's a huge shift, I think. And, and again, in the technological parlance, the tourism industry in South Haven has been disrupted. It's been significantly changed. So we presented this information to two potential contractors. Both were interested in doing the project. I emphasized in particular that the council needed something to work on within 90 days. They really, the contractors really need to put forth an effort to develop some scenarios where if you do this, that's going to happen. That's the impact of you doing this. And both contractors agreed that they'd be able to do that. I don't think there needs to be a lot of time chasing data. There's a considerable amount of data available. You've assured that, your housing study, your ongoing relationship with the housing analyst. These are all good sources of material for the contractors to work. Your GIS person has worked very hard to identify the various neighborhoods where the issue is, is prevalent. So I think it's possible for this to get done, and get done in a way that enables you to make a data, data-driven decision within, within 90 days. And I would say that if the city enters into a contract with one of the contractors, just to protect yourselves, it's going to be done in 90 days. I don't really want to comment on one versus the other. One involves the use of an existing model where data inputs allow you to draw certain conclusions. The other wants to take, I think, more of an expansive approach, interviewing groups across the city, and then compiling that information on, on top of the data available to give you several different scenarios. I have provided the city manager with what I call a decisional analysis memorandum, where you would identify a policy question, and I'm only using this as an example, should the city council of South Haven restrict short-term rentals to, say, 15% of the total housing stock within the city of South Haven? What are the implications, and what are the impacts of that? And you can go through technical considerations, financial considerations, neighborhood considerations, housing considerations, pro and con. And by the time you get work through this document, you're, you're pretty close to having an answer on, on the policy that, that you would like to pursue. One of the proposals comes in at a rate of, of, at a cost that would enable the, the city manager to go right ahead and contract. The other could possibly range a little bit above and beyond that. But in discussing this, we wanted to bring the proposals to you to kind of get your sense. And I was able to watch a, I believe it was a YouTube question and answer between the mayor, Councilman Schleck, and Jim Roby. And it's quite an enlightening thing to watch in terms of identifying the issues. And if you haven't seen it, you should. And I made sure that both contractors, although one of them participated in it, but both contractors saw that, because the city representatives did an excellent job of representing their neighborhoods and identifying what their concerns were. We'd like to kind of get to that, that same place with the rest of the council, so that we all know what we're looking for. But at this point in time, my request to the contractor is, this gets done in 90 days. The council has a couple of situations where if they do this, that is going to be the impact, or that's going to happen. So I'll try and answer any questions that you, you might have. Joe?
The two different proposals, it's my thought, reading these, and it's not easy reading. Is it Roby that's one that has the model?
Yes.
Okay, that's what.
Implant, it's called implant.
Okay. Then the second question, dealing with the issue that you brought up. You said, short-term rentals, I don't want to misquote you, but has been, has been troublesome. Good, bad, or indifferent, troublesome. That's not the word you used. Here's my simple question, because I know you're, you're great at, at your job. Economics 101 says supply and demand. So if you decrease a demand, excuse me, you increase a demand of homes, because there is clearly in this state, in this area, a demand for home growing, and you decrease the supply, you don't make enough, and you rent out with the new platform, renting homes instead of people owning them. People can't rent them, someone else rents them and rents them out of short-term rental. So you've decreased the home supply, increased the demand, so the prices have to go up. Economics 101. So is that, or is that not in this state and in this community, an issue?
I think it's a huge issue.
Okay, that's all I'm here. Now, the last thing, this is for everyone sitting up here, a thought. This is one that touches everybody in this room, the short-term rentals. I would like to suggest that we have two people from city council. You pick who, pick who you want, Mr. Mayor. And let them be the captains of this, this project, rather than staff. I want this to be the people that have to face the community and say, this is what we came up with and why, rather than staff. Because of what was said in that vision statement, some of the concerns about, I want to choose my words carefully, but some of the concerns that staff or the city may not be on this issue as representative as the people want. So let's pick a couple city council people that have been elected by the city in this town. Let us, one, two of us, let's say, be the people that are the captains of this project. That would be my recommendation.
If it's done in 90 days, the two captains have better be committed to keeping a schedule, because it's, it's going to take a lot of talking and a lot of analysis, like I said, of existing data. And what I like about your idea is you've been facing the ferocity of the storm on this issue for months on end now. You pretty much know, I think, what the intrinsic issues are. So I don't have any, you know, from my perspective, I wouldn't have any problem with that at all. I do want to comment on one thing, though, about the supply and demand. Irrespective of what you do in short-term rentals, there needs to be an effort in this community to identify properties on which you can build new housing. You know, you've got to expand your housing supply. There's a, there's a million reasons why you've got to do that. And I, and I'm really kind of fearful that we will continue to trip over the short-term rental and at the expense of the bigger picture, which is providing adequate housing for people who want to live and work in South Haven. And, and along with adequate housing, viable neighborhoods as well. I mean, short-term rentals are a big issue, but they're not the only reason why, you know, some of the neighborhoods in, in South Haven might be considered degraded, you know? People don't live there year-round, for example. But that's their choice. We can't really legislate that, it's their property and their choice. But if the lights go out in 40% of your neighborhood from, say, November to February or April or March, the neighborhood will degrade over time. There's, there's little question about that. Back on the subject of, of increasing supply, if you, again, look at the economics, the ability to pay, income levels, area median income levels, and the cost, I've thought about us approaching various employers in the South Haven area hospital. I've already talked to the public schools about it, but possibly expanding that on to larger employers who have an interest in people living and working here, and seeing if we could inform some sort of an employer consortium to provide housing, more housing availability in the South Haven area. So there's a million ways to attack this, but right now, we're, we're focused on the short-term rentals. And a lot of, a lot of wisdom, I think, can come out of this process in terms of envisioning a viable community that's clean, safe, and accessible.
Anybody else, thoughts, comments?
I, I am, reading through them, I really appreciate the depth of the first proposal. I think we could get some really good insight from the questions they're asking and what they're looking for. The second one just was a little more generic to me. So I really liked the first one.
I, I kind of liked the, the first one because it seemed to include, I think, like, four to five sessions with some, I guess, stakeholders in the community, community meetings. The second one, I, the advantage of that is it used some software which can be maybe a little more objective. Although I know that the two people involved in, in the second proposal were also involved, were authors in the Upjohn report, the community health assessment that came out in March of this year. So I'm not sure how, if that might cloud their judgment a little bit.
Good question.
My feeling was that when I went through both, both proposals, I felt that the questions that I've had, as far as the cause and effect and the future, having something that I can put on the table, not just for me, but future councils, years ahead of time, possibl, possibly, is my thought that the Roby-Ericsec proposal, I guess that's numbered the second proposal, answered more of those questions for me. However, I have a couple of concerns as far as their approach. But as far as having a, a tool in my toolbox that I can look for in the future, I thought the Roby proposal met that much better as far as what they were going to do on, on, on the data part with the numbers and the cause and effects. So by far, that, that proposal is, is the one I'm going to support. My concern with that proposal is, they talked in there, and I'm, and I'm not sure if I maybe misunderstood it or not, but they're going to use the ZIP code approach. And I would prefer the, the property tax rolls in their research, because if you know how far 62nd Street reaches outside of town to 107th Avenue, that's still a South Haven address. When in fact, our city limits are three quarters of a mile that way. So the, the, the South Haven ZIP code, I would prefer more of a property tax in city of South Haven for the data and the numbers. To me, that would make more sense. And as far as the approach of the housing goes and things of that nature, again, we have to team up with the surrounding townships. Our city limit sign is three quarters of a mile that way. So we have to include, when, when we think of housing and affordable housing, we have to include more than three quarters of a mile. We have to include our townships. And, and, and I think that's starting to work, and that's starting to, we've had a, a session with them. We're working on the south corridor of the township. We've, we've taken over some, and we're doing some incentives there. So as far as the, the home issue and affordable housing, I think we have to look at the community as a larger entity, including the townships. As far as our city and what this council and our community wants, I think we have to, as far as the short-term rentals go, we have to look inside our city limits, inside our tax base. And that's the way I approach it. And, and the Roby proposal seems to catch that for me, a little better than the other proposal. Along with the, the meetings and everything else. So that's, that's my input.
One of the things that is notable in the townships, and even where, in the area where I live, which is about seven miles away, as cities have acted on short-term rentals, in some cases, as cities have acted on short-term rentals, in some cases restrictively, it's pushed that activity out to those other areas. So some sort of coordination, at least, as you've addressed it, I think, is necessary going forward. You know, if short-term rentals are a problem, just pushing them out several miles doesn't really fix things. And it may, to some extent, hurt the city's tourism business, but I'm not prepared to draw direct cause and effect on that as yet.
It's coming later. Any others? I'll throw in mine for now. I do know, I mean, having talked to both, I do know that Roby intends to meet with groups, including, you know, to understand the economic drivers, the financial impacts. So I don't know that that came out in his report, but I know that's part of his analysis. He has to meet with individual shop owners. That's part of his. So I will say, the model concept is kind of what I think that's, the goal was if you reduce by percentage of X, what are the drivers? What's going to boom, 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 boom? So we can understand, you know, what are the impacts? And obviously, to the reverse, what if you continue at rate Y? You know, what would happen? So I just think, for me, I think the goal was to come up with a model we could look at quickly, understand, give us the financial variables, and then make decisions and go. So that's just kind of where I'm leaning initially. So, and obviously, on housing, you and I, we've been around. Just so everyone's aware, we are frequently in touch with the township, Ross. Very good terms with the township. We're always looking at opportunities, partner on housing. We've talked about regional housing authorities. Looked at the Grand Haven model. We've looked at that. We will continue. We've talked to employers. We will continue. There's a few things. Hopefully, we can create some additional opportunities. So obviously, housing will continue to be developed in the near seeing. Tonight, we're building homes, which is great. So how about, before we go further, get a couple of public comments on this, that we can see if someone's got a burning desire to throw out a motion to pick one? How's that sound? Public comments on this topic before we go any further? Go ahead, Mike.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I think Greg and Joe kind of hit it right on the head, okay? Many people answered that survey. And all due respect, people do not believe that the city, the city council, the planning commission take the residents' considerations, okay? They're always developer, developer, or downtown development, or whatever, and STRs, okay? And, you know, the perception is that the staff and council and planning commission are kicking the STR can down the road. We've had studies, the Upjohn studies. We had a survey done by Walt, which you guys didn't accept because you think it was biased or whatever. Went to every single voter, okay? Tremendous response. And they're still asking for more, spend more money and try to get more response. The information's there. STRs are not helping the city develop neighborhoods, okay? It is helping the tourism and whatever, but it's like Joe's, it's dividing the city, you know? People are saying, you know, STRs are bad. They're not bad. Nobody said they are. There's some instances where they are. You know, people were partying next to me, and I had to call whoever to get the police or the owner or Shore's Rentals to take care of it. But that's not by large how it is. Most of them are pretty good renters. We met a lot of nice renters. Don't get me wrong. But the city just seems to be putting us in a back burner, and it's still just a kick in the can. And that's the perception. If that's just me, not just Triple N Neighborhood, Neighborhoods and the Neighbors, that's a lot of people. The residents have had it, and they're fed up, okay? With all due respect, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Trevor Brooks, 559 Phoenix. So I'm relatively new to South Haven. As most of you guys know, this STR squabble is, it's unique, in a sense, to me, in a sense that you're talking about such a minute, in a communication funnel, like you're at the bottom of the funnel. It's the reality is, because STRs are not a thing, like, it's just a thing. It's just an investment. It's an investment vehicle. I think, in reality, STRs are good in the sense with, because of the demand for, as an investment vehicle in this town. The idea of, like, oh, let's just shut them off. Where does that investment go? It's going to go away. And it's not, you know, so if you decide, it's like, okay, we're going to cut it half of the, of the, or STRs, the theory is like, oh, suddenly, those houses are going to suddenly go back into, people are going to live here full-time. It's like, how does this, how do you come to that conclusion? It's just an assumption. So when you're doing, you know, you're doing a study, it's like, does it really go back into this pool? And suddenly, because you have this demand of like hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people wanting to buy a house because they want to live here year-round? I don't think that's true. But if what you do is if you cut them off, then suddenly, that investment, all of that investment money will leave this town, and it will not come back because there are no other investment vehicles. I think it's part of, you know, part of your guys' challenge is, think of it more as, well, this is not an STR challenge. This is an investment vehicle. In this town, there's not many. There's not a lot of ways to spend, you know? Like, you know, like I come to town and like, hey, I want to invest in this town. I, you know, trying to do a food truck park, and I got a, you know, it's a challenge, and there's just nothing, you know? It's almost like, okay, well, I can move on. There are other towns in this, you know, across this country where, that are looking to bring investors to your city, to their city or something. So I just want to be, you know, the reason why I wanted to come up is just to essentially kind of make a notice. Like, this is not who owns a house and what is that house used for? It's how that investment is used in the city, so.
Thanks for your comments.
Mary Hasley, 706 North Shore Drive. I was wondering why I couldn't find any RFP online, and now I found out that the two people, two organizations, whatever, companies were hand-selected. And there was reference to a scope of work, but I don't know what that was. And now I understand why Professor Weggel had commented about the 15% cap for STRs by 2025. So there's a lot of things that seem to be behind the scene, which is exactly what was just discussed with the vision statement about making sure community is involved. And I really appreciate comments, especially Councilman Schlock, for recognizing what is being addressed by the Jobian-Arisec proposal. But my concern is that the city made sure that Wago was available by phone, but not the other organization. It seems, I don't know, there just doesn't seem to be transparency like I would have liked. I'm not sure if even all the councilperson saw what the SOW was. And that seems to be a key part of what does the city, what is the city expecting? And that would have been involved in what the proposals were. And I wasn't quite sure, now that I understand the city went to these people, I looked them both up online. And, I mean, Professor Weggel has done a lot. But it was with public affairs and administration. I didn't see a lot about economics. And so I wasn't quite sure how that all factored into exactly what we're looking for and the questions to be answered. And I believe that's why people looking for the data and the specific answers to economics was leaning more towards the other firm. I do like the idea of two councilpersons being involved. I do recall Councilman Resher and Councilman Schlock asking for data. I think it would be helpful to have an independent citizen who is unrelated but intimately involved. I do know that one has contacted different city officials and spoke with Mayor Smith about this. I think he would possibly be willing to help. Might be worth a try to get someone who isn't tied to STRs, has been in business, knows about economic development, to help provide some unbiased input. I do think that, I don't know what the model's involved, but sales tax collected by the state for several months to get a guideline of what was pre-COVID, post-COVID, so that we see seasonal spending throughout the area and property tax information on homestead owners could also be very helpful. I know time is of the essence. I know that this has been kicked down the road a lot, a lot more than we would like. But if we're not clear what the SOW requested, if you are not clear because the city staff did not share that with you, don't let haste make waste. Make sure you understand what the companies were offering, were asked to do, and that what they were asked to do is what you really want. Kind of like Pennywise, pound foolish. In regard to housing, I just have to say, and this is one issue that I've raised time and time again, we need housing. We need a varied price point, a variety of price points in housing. PUDs are touted as providing those variety of housing, but PUDs, Trailside and others, are exempt from the cap. So they can be 100% PUDs. So how is that helping our affordable housing by allowing all of these to be, I'm sorry, I said PUDs, to be 100% STRs? They're outside of the cap. So that just doesn't seem like the left hand and the right hand are communicating.
Thanks for comments.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street.
Good evening, Joe.
I just want to echo, I believe, what Dan said, I forgot his name, but about the perception. And I've come to the podium several times over the years, pushing for affordable housing, echoing the effects of STRs. And this council has the same look. And I get accused of pointing fingers and all that. This is a real issue. There are people being priced out, looking for opportunities to live here, can't. It's more than just investing in this city. Neighborhoods are losing the character of their neighborhoods. Big homes going up, turning into party houses. Our seniors that this council seem to care so much about are being victimized by these homes going up beside them after working all their lives to retire here. There's a lot of issues. And I hear it all the time. People can't find places to stay. I'm not sure what the council need anymore. You had the Upjohn study. You had Walt's survey that went out. I told you about a book. You've read the information. I came a couple of weeks ago and talked about what Martha Vineyard is going through, hemorrhaging people that makes up the infrastructure of their community, yet being impacted by STRs on that island. Professional workers can't afford homes. And we see that. So I don't know what it is you're looking for. Either you're just ignoring it, you're kicking the can down the road, you don't want to deal with it. That's what it seems to be. When you've had all these other studies, and there's other studies out there. There's a great book that I brought here that nobody asked to read about, going through the same issue. And when I look at this whole issue, STR has became the tool used causing this great gentrification in our area. And it's sad, and when you look at what's going on on the south side of South Haven, land that was once redlined. Now you have these homes going up, the development that's going in Everett's, factories that was once there. My father's worked in those factories. Somebody said, well, why didn't you guys take advantage of that land? Remember, it was redlined. You could not invest in that stuff, the land, because it had no value. Couldn't go to the bank and try to get a loan for it. Now, all of a sudden, that land that was undervalued has all of a sudden, it's at a price level that is causing all this stuff to take place now. And we're being priced out. And you, the council, I've heard this argument over and over and over again. And now you're looking for more studies, more workshops. We're three years into this, I think even more. And yet, I come here, time after time, and it's the same look. It's time that this council do something about this STR issue. It is a problem. And I do agree with Steve. Pushing, just dealing with it with here is what Holland is facing. Holland got a grip around it in the city, but the problem now is in the township. So I do agree with some of this stuff. But it appears to me and others that this council refused to do anything. And it's been said even on the planning commission, by those that are running it. Do we have to really deal with this issue? And so, in closing, I totally disagree in some parts, a great part. Totally do disagree with the statement of the person who's looking at this as just investment. It's more than investment. It's home to me. It's home to people and neighborhoods. It's more than just an opportunity for investment. So thank you for listening to me again. I'm sure I'll get nailed again by making harsh comments, but it's closely dear to me because I'm seeing a lot of people being pushed out of South Haven and not being allowed the opportunity to even live here. Thank you.
Thanks for comments.
Danielle Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And I thank you for one of your first comments. You said, "This is an issue that ate a community." That's the heart of it. It has divided our community in ways that are really sad. Had I known that I would be living in a community like this four years in, where I'm not sure I can have a decent conversation with the person who bought the house next door because now they're running it out, and they know that I'm not fond of that idea. So now I've got someone living, living next to me that isn't really a neighbor. We're not trying, the Neighborhoods Need Neighbors group is not trying to get rid of all STRs. That is a misconception. We realize that there are a lot of people who own homes here, are renting them out. We'd like a cap. Mr. Wilkins just mentioned redlining. I had a conversation yesterday at a church dinner where a gentleman said in the '70s, he and his wife were looking at a very inexpensive house on Monroe Street. It had fallen into some disrepair, wasn't in great shape. They called the realtor, and the realtor said, "Well, you're going to need to come in and talk to us" because it was a red-lined street. They wanted to know what color the people were looking at that house on Monroe Street. Shouldn't happen then, shouldn't happen now. I love Joe's idea about council members as at least part of being captains. I know that you are busy. I know you are. I know many of you already have full-time jobs. But your voice, your ideas, your thoughts are what the citizens want. We want your oversight on this as well as staff. And our communities are dark, not from November to March, but from September to April. My neighborhood is dark. I don't have somebody to have a neighborhood Christmas party with because they don't live there. This has eaten our community, and it continues to. I also agree with Joe Wilkins, how many studies do you need? But if this is the one that's going to give you the picture to do something, then let's move on it.
Thanks for comments.
Aaron Cobb, 914 Center Street. And I have more of a question. On the, for the last two to five years since, you know, this short-term rental has been an issue, how many, what percentage of the new homes that have been built in South Haven and purchased were built and purchased by people that came here to work and live and have kids to go to the school system? And what percentage was built and purchased by, for people with short-term rental? That would be my question. Because as Professor Wilson, Wilkins was talking about, you know, people that want to work, come here to work, they're being priced out. people that want to work, coming to work, they're being priced out. Because I've been here a long time, and I know what the price of home was over there, and I know all about the redlining and all that, but I'm not going into that. But I know of a habitat home was built over there, a habitat home, and last year, that home was sold for almost $200,000, and that home is now used for a short-term rental, and it was a habitat home. I know because I was on the Habitat board when the home was built. So that would be my question, percentage-wise, is, can, is any, is any home being built for people to come here, that buy, come here, work and buy, putting the kids in the school? What percentage of the home being built for short-term rental? From what I see, most of the homes going up now is for short-term rental, and because people that come here to work don't seem like they can afford to buy the home. Because I know if I would come here making $20 an hour, the home that was, I'm just talking about, was, was built as a habitat home. If you were making $20 an hour, what that home was sold for, the lady come to the store and told me what she paid for the home, and she got it for $20,000 less than what they put it on the market for. At first, $20 an hour, you couldn't afford to buy that home. So, you know, that would be my question. What percentage are the homes for people that work and live and put the kids in school here, or what percentage of the home being built for short-term rental?
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Maureen Marilick. I'm actually, right now, I live at 1034 Midway Drive. That is South Haven, but it is Casco Township. However, I love the comment, short-term rental issues that ate a community. I owned a property at 1048 Hazel. I used to be a neighbor of Scott's. I also owned a property at 101 Orchard Drive, also in South Haven, and I also had one at 7702 St. Joseph. Both of those, the one on Hazel, I mean, the one on Orchard and the one that we rehabbed over in the Dunes, those two were rentals. So I'm very familiar with rentals. I've run them for years. I've not had any issues with them. The concern I have, I keep listening to all this new development that's going in Trailside and whatever. When I lived on Hazel, I was here before the council, when that whole thing was involved with our JP Peterson, who we know bought that area for a dollar. He was to remove all the pollution. He was given, I think, $2 million by the state of Michigan to clean it up. He did not do it deep enough. He only took about, I don't know, maybe six feet away. Then we had the fences around there because the animals were going in there, and we had all the piles of dirt, whatever. I was exactly one block away. I didn't live there at the time, but I did own the property there. So then they decided, well, maybe that's, that's not going to work, because the only thing we could allow were apartments there.
Hey, Maureen, I'm just trying to, I got to kind of get you on task here. We're talking about an economic development proposal. Are you going to bring it into that topic?
Well, I'm just bringing into the whole economic thing. Now we're going from a parcel that could not be developed because of the pollution, and now we've got subdivisions going in that are allowing short-term rentals. What happened? Now, you don't think that's economic development involvement? From not being able to be built to now we've got short-term rentals going in there? I guess I'm missing something here.
Yeah, it's...
That's all.
Thank you. Have a good night. Anybody else on this particular topic relative to the economic development proposal? If not, anybody want to throw one out? We could discuss it.
Can it?
Questions?
Yeah, I just have one more comment before anybody makes a motion, which is just, it's not repeating what I said earlier, but I do have concerns about the second proposal being, not coming in with any qualitative data. And the first one, I do appreciate that it does have qualitative data listed in there. I think the numbers are great, but if we're not studying the social impact of short-term rentals in our neighborhoods, if we get a report that doesn't address that, then I feel like it's missing a huge chunk of it. I get that the economic impact is important, but I think the qualitative, like quality of life, impact is just as important for us. So that's why I do feel really strongly about supporting the first proposal, and it's cheaper.
With that in mind, I would like to make a motion to have the city pursue the ROBI analytic proposal for an economic impact report regarding short-term rentals.
Second.
All right, motion to second. And second, now let's talk about it. So anyone else want to kick it off? I've thrown in a few thoughts, but I can...
To me, it just comes back to having that tool for future, so that it doesn't have to take so long to make a decision or an adjustment in the future. We've got the other content and the data through the, the other Upjohn reports and things of that nature. To me, no, this is, this is the other side of that for, for the financial part of it. What's the, what are the effects of that, so that when we make a decision, or future councils make a decision, they have those, they have that number. We've, we've got the emotion into it already now. We know that emotion. We know the NNN, their theories of, of capping and down doing that, and people not wanting to live next door to a short-term rental. I've, I've got all that in my head. Now I need the numbers to go with that so that, that I can balance that out, and that's why I seconded your motion.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't we be getting those numbers regardless of what study we go to? Mr. Henniger, didn't you say you would have those kind of lined out for us? Or did I misunderstand that?
Those numbers appear to be readily available, you know. I think, I think a key number for the council to focus on is primary owner occupied. You know, who's getting the homestead tax exemption? That tells you who's here all the time, or at least most of the time. But as I've said before, you know, there's been a number of studies done. You've got an outstanding housing analyst on, under contract to advise you.
I guess what, what I'm talking about is, I thought you said in the beginning of your presentation that we would have information if we went down to this number, this would happen, this number, this would happen regardless of who did the study.
I, I, I think that should be very much your goal in, in pursuing this.
Okay.
That, you know, again, if the council does this, what are the impacts? You know, what are the impacts to the neighborhood? What are the impacts, you know, to the schools, to the hospital? The mayor and I have made, and other staff have made several retention calls, and, you know, I'm not afraid to throw that issue out, you know, what, what would, how would it impact your business, you know? And, you know, goes from non-committal to please don't do that, you know? And either way, you're not going to come out with an entirely happy camp, but the numbers, the data is readily available, and, I mean, I've seen it everywhere. And again, your GIS person is well-equipped to fine-tune anything neighborhood by neighborhood. So either of these contractors are capable of doing that. And I guess one comment I'd like to make is that for a study like this, you don't go to a cement mixer, you go to people who do data-driven types of, of work, so that policymakers can realize the impacts of the decisions that they make.
Good job.
It's been said by other residents tonight, and I think we all know this, we're kind of stuck right now. We've, as Steve said, we've heard all these different sides to this, and yet we're still sitting here. And the one thing I think the community needs is a decisive path to go forward. We need answers. We need information to make a decision. So in my opinion, I believe the residents have already made decisions, but it doesn't matter. If, if it takes the city council facts, and if this company, and I trust you, Jim, I think you've done this long enough, if you think they can give us the data, the facts that we need to move our city council off a dime to be able to make a decision, I would love, and I would be offered to give my time to be on one or two or three people to help with this project, but I will be glad to take, get the facts and help in any way I can, because if that's what it'll take for the council to feel good to make a decision, and I understand, I don't, I love facts, I love data, I'll quote them all the time. So I'm fine with using this company if that'll give us the information that we can pull together, because I hate seeing us as city council not be a strong singular unit that can tell the residents, we're trying to help you to do the right thing, but we got to do something, and maybe this is our way to do it.
Great. Anybody else?
Well, I kind of lean toward the first proposal, but I, I kind of feel like we need to move forward, and I think the second one will probably do the job. I am a little concerned with the independence of the second group, but I'll go with the, I'll go with the motion.
Yeah, I guess, again, I, I feel like, just their past history also would benefit us in this case, because they have been here before. We do have a, a ton of data. Now the question is, how do you take that data and turn it into something in a simple, meaningful, you know, something that we can actually use to churn economic data? We have a lot of, you know, heart string, we all know, you know, the subjective stuff. Now it's the objective stuff. So, all right, if there's nothing else, we've got a motion, we've got a second, which would be for the ROBI. Oh, why don't we do a roll call? Let's be safe.
We have Onuki?
No.
Reese?
Make sure I know what I'm voting on. I'm voting on ROBI right now. Yes or no, correct?
The ROBI analytical. Okay. And we have Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Smith? Oh, I'm sorry, Arnold?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Perfect, very good. Next, we're going to receive an update from our DPW director, Mr. Bill Hunter, who is still here. What are we building?
So much.
So much. There we go. That's the right answer.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. This is an update, DPW update, about projects that are happening within the city. New substation has started. The contractors broke ground. You should be expecting still more material that'll go in front of city council for the distribution circuits that need to be upgraded around that. AMI project meters are, are expecting those meters to be coming in this fall, and we're hoping this spring to have that completely changed over and have that system totally utilized. Staff is working on a buy-in plan for Shausa to utilize the AMI network. Ailworth, the non-motorized pathway. This project is to be rebid through MDOT for early spring construction this fall. New air handling units. We're working with a separate contractor to install a hatch to get the new air handling units in. They're not expected to be here until December 5th. Kids Corner, we opened up bids on September 21st. Staff is reviewing those bids. Once we get a review in place, we're going to present those proposals to the Parks Commission. Master Plan update, we have an opinion survey that's still on the website and is still out there until October 16th. Only takes 13 minutes to do, so please get that out to any of your constituents. More opinions the better. We need this input for, actually for the Parks Master Plan update. Pier railing and gate, we are, yes, still waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers agreement. I send them a reminder email, and they're, they're getting on it. So I think when I formed city council, it's about a 12 to 16-month process for their review of agreements. We have this agreement in front of them, plus actually one for the Life Rings as well. North Beach snow fence, yes, we'll be putting snow fence up at the North Beach. We usually get phone calls once it's too early, but it's, it's, we have the staff to do it now, and we have other things we have to do, so I, I understand that, but if I waited until just about winter, I'd be behind on everything else. So it is a, it's a, it's a timing thing. Loosely pickup will begin October 17th, and it'll run through December 9th tentatively. I say tentatively because if it snows, we're done.
Sometimes it doesn't, and you wrote in January.
Yeah, sometimes it doesn't, and we, and we like to be as flexible as we can, but unfortunately, and if the temperatures get really low, the machines actually just keep getting plugged up. So colder temperatures, those vector traps, we, we have two of them, and they're great, great pieces of equipment. However, Mother Nature with cold temperatures, that doesn't work as well. Bridge hours, bridge hours will change to seven to 11 every day, starting October 5th, and the last day of operation will be October 30th. Street resurfacing, the projects we're doing right now, we should have them completed by, by late this month. And that was Superior from Maple to Center, Van Buren Street from Indiana to Center, Spencer from Indiana to Kalamazoo, Cartwright from Indiana to Center, Alby from, Abell from Indiana to Center, and Cable from Indiana to Center. We're now working on the street resurfacing for the spring of 2023. We're putting together construction plans for resurfacing as well as replacing the lead and copper, the lead services. We should have that bid out early this winter and complete it in the spring. Pacer ratings, we just recently had Van Buren County Road Commission do pacer ratings for our roads. That's a, that's a rating of our roads. The scale is one to 10, 10 being brand-new, one being failure. And it's, good news is actually we have about 27.09% of our roads are at a rating of eight or greater. We have a fair rating, but it would be five to seven. We have 33.36 and a poor rating, and that would be our percentage of 39.55. And that's a rating of one to four. We're working actually covert township flushing rates. We are still working on the rate for that. That is to recoup our costs for the flushers in covert. Shausa water service replacement, Comptons is still continuing on replacing the water services. We are increasing this contract. We're finding actually services that should be, historically should be led, we're finding that they're not. We're finding they're galvanized with copper goose necks, or it's, it's not a really good standard that you would expect. So that's good news, but bad news is, is that our inventory is not what we thought, so we have to expand and just keep going. Good news, it lowers the number down for us. Sanitary survey, that's a, it's funny, because they call it a sanitary survey, but it's actually for the water distribution. It is our evaluation of the water system. Eagle comes in, they go through all of our records to make sure we're doing everything correctly. It's an evaluation of our system. They go through, and, and usually when they're done, it's a report card, and they tell us, maybe there's certain things we need to work on, or other things, you're just doing a great job. And then last but not least, the, our, our lead and copper sampling, we just completed those, and we should have those results probably within the next couple of weeks. That's every three years, we have to do our lead and copper samples according to the Safe Water Drinking Act. Is there anything, City Council, would like to ask any questions on DPW projects?
Maybe just a clarification from what you just said. The drawbridge will still be operationable by appointment in November, correct?
Correct. Yes.
With half-hour notice?
Yes, that usually takes us about enough time for staff to get there, yes.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you. The sanitary survey report card, is that made public afterward?
Does that mean public? No, we don't, because there's actually stuff on there that's critical and that can't be shared, like, for example, like, critical elements within the system.
Okay.
So if I shared that, actually it would leave us susceptible to any kind of...
Okay.
So...
Gotcha.
But if, but if we are violating anything, actually, that, we have to report that, so if there's certain things, it's a multi-evaluation, so if there's certain things that we are, we are required to actually... So if there's certain things that we are, we are required actually to report these violations. However, to reveal actually this sanitary survey, there are critical things on there that can't be shared.
Okay, that's interesting to know. For the pacer ratings, the streets that were rated poor are the majority of those, would you say? Are they kind of on the schedule to be redone or will those be shifted around so that they do get attention to them?
We, we have a lot of those on there, but we do have to take a look at, just because there are certain roads, for example, if you have a road that has a higher traffic count, for example, and if that is a fair rating, it'll deteriorate quicker than a road with a, that might be at a fair rating or a poor rating with a lower traffic count. Traffic counts, the higher the traffic count you have, the more beating you have, then it increases. If your slope under, the failure rate will go down at a drastic level. So it might be some of those, for example, the cape sealing that we've been doing. You'll see a lot of those we do is to get those roads from fair to good so we can get the percentages up higher. So to answer your question, I just want to make sure I'm fair. Yes, not all of them, but we try to mix up the cape seals to keep our, all of our ratings at a trend going up.
Okay. I just, like, I know some residents have brought it to my attention before that they live on roads that are less than wonderful condition, perhaps in the poor quality category, but they just feel like they're not on the radar at all because they're not well-traveled, so.
They're on the radar. We try to sprinkle those in when we can. We do understand that we have to, to balance. And it is, it is a challenge because of course the balances, we have X number of dollars coming in. And that's also why we implemented that cape seal so we could do something more economic and get the mill and fills, as I call, out to the other roads and increase everything up. But we try to get those dead ends, for example, there's one actually that's, that's been trying for many years. It's actually Broadway, it's a little loop that's there, but it doesn't get a lot of traffic, only three or four cars. But it, and it's been on the capital plan, I want to say pushed back a couple of times, but we are getting that one. So to answer your question, we try the best we can, but unfortunately, we do have to focus the money when we can on those roads with the higher counts.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And there is a nice list, and I mean, we've.
With a map?
Yeah, I was just looking at that.
We did a five-year millage and then we've done a 20. And we should probably get an up. I know we're getting, we've got a couple of years left, but I would still argue we should create a permanent millage and put it out there if we could, because we always have to fix the roads, just saying.
That's very true.
My comment is just a thank you to Bill and his staff. I got stopped at the farmer's market. Some residents had asked a question about a drain pipe that they thought was sketchy and were nervous about it. And I got ahold of Kate and she sent me to Bill. And not only was the staff already aware of it, they already had a study being completed on it. And they were all concerned about kids climbing on it and they already got warning signs on it. So they were well ahead of the, ahead of the problem. So thanks, you and your staff for being so diligent.
Thank you.
I have got a plug too for Mr. Hunter. So the Michigan Municipal Electrical Association puts out a magazine every month. And there's a, the cover story is about South Haven. It's a really good article, but Mr. Bill Hunter is featured very prominently in that article.
That's awesome.
Get that autograph, maybe. Right, autographs available?
Good idea, yeah.
I would like to see that.
Stick around for photos after.
Very good. On that note, let's just let him.
Your autograph.
That's right. Once you're done, we'll get your autograph. So all right. Are we all good with Mr. Hunter? Thanks, Bill. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty, citizens, the audience, we've heard on items not on the agenda. So if there's something we have not talked about in the last two and a half hours you'd like to come talk about, come on up. And if not, we can go home. So close.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. As everyone knows, I'm a process person. I just really like to check boxes and make sure lists are followed. So I was wondering, has Habitat filed their application? It was due at 5:00 PM today. I was also wondering, beach safety is supposed to be a discussion topic in October, and it wasn't today, so will it be at the next one? And the ZBA meeting, I don't know how many of you have taken four hours out of your time to watch the ZBA meeting last week, but it was exceptional. But there was no action taken for the very last item, which was the one of most importance about jurisdiction of the ZBA. So timeliness of things before the ZBA and determining the timeliness of it. It's alleged that it's more efficient for the staff to do that, but it's really more like the fox in charge of the hen house because an appeal to the ZBA of a staff's decision is challenging that staff's decision. And that staff is then able to say whether it does or does not go, depending on how timing is counted. They did an excellent job, I have to say, with regard to the kitchen on Oak. I applaud the staff and the ZBA. It's not so clear that it's been routinely handled so efficiently or fairly. And the case law that the city attorney had originally cited for an appeal with regard to aggrieved party has actually been overturned by the Supreme Court. Not that specific case, but the holding of it. And so had an appeal been filed after July 22nd, it would have been, found an aggrieved party. But unfortunately, it was before July 22nd, whatever day it was. So she was not found an aggrieved party, which is very sad. And fees, oh, but in that case law, sorry, I got a little sidestep. In that case law, the discussion in that case law was that the ZBA decided timeliness. The ZBA was the fact finder. The ZBA applied the law to the facts. That's what the ZBA is supposed to do, not the staff, not the attorney. They can present their arguments, but the ZBA, not the staff, are supposed to decide jurisdictional issues. When you file something in circuit court, the circuit court clerk doesn't say, sorry, it's too late, you can't file it. The judge makes the decision. The same should be done with the ZBA. Fees, those nasty fees. So they're set by ordinance. And in fact, the city attorney cited a case supporting fees. And golly, the fees that were supported in that case were because the city council or whatever township had approved a resolution that was required by their ordinances to set that fee. Well, we have a very similar ordinance that requires fees to be set by the city council. And the city council did that just a couple of years ago in 2020 when we were horribly undercharging and had a huge deficit of, I think, over $100,000. Kate can correct me if I'm wrong. She's the one who presented. Additional fees were approved in the fees set in 2020. And it was capped at $500 for attorneys, consultants, any additional fees in top of, on top of the basic fee. Not $1,500, which is the standard fee being charged as an escrow for everybody else. And when it was said last week that, well, because that case was upheld as $1,500, we can charge, the city of South Haven can charge $1,500 for an escrow, I respectfully disagree that that's a proper decision. The escrow fee is supposed to be set by the fees, I mean, set by the city council, and they're supposed to be intimately tied to the work. So it's not that another court upheld 1,500. We don't even know the same issues. I can guarantee you they were not. So for process, please start following our ordinances and applying them equally across all of us. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
I have a cap in my hand. I'm gonna let you go home. But I want, I want to say this, Aaron Cobb, 914 Center Street. The Evers property across the street from the Overton property on Indiana Avenue, where all the grass is growing so tall. And I had a couple of people ask me, a couple of other residents asked me, why that grass is so tall? The city won't cut the grass. And I approached, I stopped the coding officer twice. And he told me that that property belongs to some developer and they just haven't cut the grass. He sent them a letter. And I said, why they haven't cut the grass? He said, well, you know, the fine might be $50 and it don't really affect them. But my problem is with that, if my grass get three inches tall, I get a letter. And other people in the area, residents, they get a letter. And I wonder why they haven't forced them to cut their grass. And you know what grass I'm talking about? On the Evers, where the Evers building was on Indiana Avenue, right across from north of the, of the Overton property.
Okay.
Just ride through there. I'd like to ride through there and see how tall that grass is. It's been like that all summer. I think that grass was cut once this, this summer, once or twice. And other residents been complaining about it. But, you know, and I was wondering the same thing. And I will tell you what I told the coding officer. If they can't, if the city can't have forced them to cut, to cut that grass, then he shouldn't be riding through giving nobody else a letter, sending nobody else a letter when their grass get three inches tall. And I would hate to think that the city would have them to send me a letter. My grass get three inches tall and they let somebody else's grass get six or seven inches and, you know, don't force them to cut the grass.
Well, we'll look into it. I hadn't heard that, so we'll check into it.
Yes, that's, all right, thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street, and I'm just going to read this right off of what I wrote. But I want to give clarity. First of all, I believe I owe it to the council to give clarity to a statement I made concerning "love thy neighbor as thyself" a few meetings ago. I think I owe it to the council. As a pastor in this area, I'm very frustrated with what seems like a lack of concern for people that are struggling, people that are hurting, misplaced and looking for a place to stay in South Haven. I hear their complaints, the frustration and the hurts in their voices and trying to convince them that things is going to get better and that changes on the way is becoming more frustrating, not only to them, but to me as a pastor. Many times I hear the statement that they don't want us to, they don't want us here. And trying to speak positive to those types of statements are, again, becoming more frustrating. And as a leader, the only thing that I feel can give them hope as well as myself is believing that one day God will balance things out and things will be different. Now that was taken, I guess, the wrong way by some of the council members, but that's my belief. And so my only intention by making that statement was to remind every one of us that with love, we have a moral, a human and a spiritual obligation to help make life better for everyone when it's in our power to do so. And I still believe that. Somebody asked me the other day, why don't you just give up fighting and just live, live your life and be happy? Well, I'm not like one of those pastors that can preach their little sermons on Sunday and retreat back to their place of comfort. That's not me. That's not my calling. So I tried to render my voice for equality and inclusion. But it's becoming more and more frustrating when it appears that every effort that is being made is shut down by the powers to be. And I still feel that way. I'm asking you as the staff and council, and I was asking you then, to remember those that are struggling or trying to make ends meet or looking for a place to stay in South Haven. They simply desire a city government that will remember them and their decision process. Because so many individuals feel like they're left out of this whole process. And I close, as well as doing what they can, as well as doing what you can to help bring about changes that will inspire and make life better for everyone. I believe I owe that to the council because someone told me that they felt offended that I made the statement, "love thy neighbor as thyself." Thank you. Bye.
Thanks for your comments.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. Reverend Aaron, that property is owned by, guess who? Everett Park LLC, okay? It's about 18 inches high right now. My wife and I commented on it last night when we were taking a dog for a walk. She says, oh, I get to see the red fox and her babies and then the one deer with her triplets. I said, yeah, but they, they don't have to cut it, so they save a lot of money. This contractor, the reason he built these big houses is because he lost his shirt on the rest of Phase One. Because of the market handling with labor and material, he had repriced things so many times. One lady was upset because her house wasn't getting finished. And he says, I'll buy it back from you for, for $25,000 while you paid for it because I can sell it for another $100,000. And just an example, they just sold Lot 19 for $820,000, whatever it was. And they're not going, they're not going to start at any of the other houses until they get their money for that. So they're having a cash flow problem. And anything they can do to save money, they will. And like I said, jamming in all those houses is the same thing, okay? Just to give them another example, Bill Rupp now used to own a house on 115 Abel. He was the only other full-time resident there. He paid $425,000 for that house a year and a half ago. Guess what he sold it for? $620,000. That just shows you how bad the market is. And the, and the fact is, I don't care how many studies you're going to do, STRs, businesses raise the price because nobody else can buy these properties, okay? And so we got to think about, this contractor, developer tries to get away with a lot of things. We've talked about it before and we, and I'm going to, he's going to have trouble with me because it's going to be right across the street from me. And Joe will see it. Joe lives down the street, Reverend Joe Wilkins. And Aaron lives down, not too far away. So we're going to keep track of them, okay? This contractor is, I mean, developer is not very good. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else? All right, let's go. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. George just kind of stole my thunder. I was also going to talk about the Currents magazine, which we have linked on our city's webpage so anyone can go and look at that article. I agree that Bill did an excellent job in talking about our resiliency of our electric system as well as just the natural beauty that's here in South Haven. I'll keep my comments short tonight. We're knocking on quarter to 10. So the other, only other thing I wanted to talk about is that this week, if you're not aware, the state senate did take up House Bill 4722. They did move that from out of committee onto the Senate floor for full consideration. If you're not sure what, House Bill 4722, that is to remove short-term rental controlled by local governments. And it would allow it just to be mandated at the state level. So what we've been talking about tonight about short-term rentals, there is a real potential threat. This will not be controlled by city officials like right now. And in fact, that there would be a minimum of 30% of your housing stock could be rentals. So I do want everyone to understand that if you are concerned about this, you might want to contact your, your state senator or contact the senate and send your letters to this House, Senate, I'm sorry, the Senate to consider your, your thoughts on the matter. Those are my comments.
Very good. Thank you much. Counsel, Joe?
No comment.
George?
I was also going to make a comment about the House Bill 4722. That really scares me as far as someone who's been involved with short-term rentals and all the work that the city put in, that could all be for naught if that bill goes and gets approved in the state legislature. And the way it came up last week, there was no notice ahead of time. It was kind of a surprise addition to come out of committee. And it could just as quickly find itself on the Senate floor without any kind of heads up. So I agree with Kate. Please contact your local representatives, not just the ones that are currently there, but also the candidates too, because they should be aware of this issue also. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Lynn?
I've just been thinking, and then with our DEI workshop earlier, and the book that Reverend Wilkins recommended about gentrification. And I know that's one of our priorities. And just wondering if there'll be any plans kind of coming up as we're getting, moving through the fiscal year. So that was an issue that I would like for us as a council to kind of look at sometime sooner than later. Now that's it. Thank you.
No comment?
No comment.
No comment.
Homecoming Friday night, 5:30 parade. Be there. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All of us, say aye.
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 Good night.